Excellent. Thank you, everybody. I appreciate you taking the time to listen to Boma again this year. Since 2009, we've been running your deer management program for LMT. We've had great success. We're asking this evening that you accept our proposal for the upcoming season. We had the opportunity to meet with David and Katie and go over this year's proposal, since it's his first time that we actually had the opportunity to do that. Changes on our proposal would be the season dates, harvest numbers, and then there are the standard changes that we do every year. For everybody that's not on the board, it's not familiar with us. We charge the township no money to do our program, which I think is phenomenal. We're insured for $1 million. We purchase our own licenses. We donate the first deer to Hunter Sharing to Harvest. Most hunters donate more for a given year. All of our hunters are vetted in and tested. We make sure they can use their proper tackle throughout the year so that when they go out there, they're efficient. They have check climbing tree stands. They must have PA Hunter Ed and Bow Hunter Ed. And then we also do an interview just to make sure that they're the caliber people that we want walking the streets and in the woods of Upper Makefield. You know, make sure we represent you guys well. We also have the township issued ID cards, and we put placards on our vehicles so that everybody can recognize who we are and know that we're out there and not be concerned with us.
Thank you, Dennis. Hopefully, we'll get a large amount of public input moving forward. Is there any other announcements by the members of the board? Hearing none, we'll go to item five, consider approval minutes for May 3rd.
So moved.
There's a second.
Second.
Motion made by Supervisor McCartney, seconded by Supervisor Blundy. Approved the minutes. Any discussion? Any public comment? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye and raise your hand. Aye. Ayes have a five zero. Very good. We'll move to the financial section. Our treasurer, Ms. McCartney.
Thank you, Chair Weiss. I'd like to make a motion to consider approval of the April interfund transfers in the amount of $752,744.31.
Second.
Motion made by Supervisor McCartney, seconded by Supervisor Granier. Any discussion? Any public comment? Call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye and raise your hand. Aye. Ayes have a five zero.
I'd also like to make a motion to consider approval of warrants list from May 1st, 2023, and May 15th from 2023, in a total of $1.494.23.
Second.
Motion made by Supervisor McCartney, seconded by Supervisor Granier. Any discussion? Any public comment? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye and raise your hand. Aye. Ayes have a five zero. Item seven. Item seven, PICO Green Region Grant Presentation. Do we have?
Mr. Doran is in the room. He's approaching the podium.
We can't hear you, Mr. Ray.
Sorry about that. Good evening. I'm Ted Duran. I'm PICO's External Affairs Manager here in Bucks County. I'm here this evening to recognize the township for its efforts related to open space preservation and to award a Green Region grant to the township for its work. And if you'll bear with me for just a couple of minutes, I just want to recap that since the inception of the Green Region Program back in 2004, PICO has awarded $2.7 million in grants to municipalities throughout our service territory for the preservation of open space and also for environmental improvements that add to the landscape and protection of vital resources in the region. Through those efforts, we've helped acquire and preserve 340 acres of open space, create 50 miles of trails, and plant approximately 14,000 trees. And we're here this evening to recognize the township for its efforts and the application that was submitted by the township to PICO to work on ADA accessibility and enhancements for Five Mile Woods, which is a tremendous resource, which I don't have to tell you folks how important it is for the township. And I would like to say that back when we began the program, we're the pipes and wires people, we're not the environmental preservationists necessarily. So we needed the expertise of an entity here in the region that could access, could provide assistance to us and expertise. So we chose Natural Lands Trust, an entity that I believe most of you are familiar with, their efforts in the region related to open space preservation. We chose them to administer the program, to evaluate the applications that come in, to create the criteria involved, and they gather up resources from the county planning commissions in our region that evaluate the submissions when they arrive for their review. And so they're the administrative agent for us and help us administer the program, and have been doing a great job. So I'm here tonight to present the grant. I actually have a facsimile check. In a minute or two, we'll gather some folks and hopefully take a quick photograph because I know you have a packed agenda. But I also brought along the real money, which is really what I know you're interested in. So with that, I'll present it to the treasurer, I guess. Would that be appropriate? I'll bring it up if you don't mind. I'll do that. And if we could get whomever's here. I promise to be quick.
Thank you, Mr. Ray. As soon as the check is given to the proper person, we can have a photo session.
Yeah, please. Oh, down a little bit. I'm sorry. Yeah. Come in a little bit. Good. Perfect. Perfect. Just try not to get those bright lights in there. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we'll go to item eight and have a presentation from Bo.
He's online, and I will bring him into the library right now.
Great.
Jim, you're currently live with the board.
Excellent. Thank you, everybody. I appreciate you taking the time to listen to Boma again this year. Since 2009, we've been running your deer management program for LMT. We've had great success. We're asking this evening that you accept our proposal for the upcoming season. We had the opportunity to meet with David and Katie and go over this year's proposal, since it's his first time that we actually had the opportunity to do that. Changes on our proposal would be the season dates, harvest numbers, and then there are the standard changes that we do every year. For everybody that's not on the board, it's not familiar with us. We charge the township no money to do our program, which I think is phenomenal. We're insured for $1 million. We purchase our own licenses. We donate the first deer to Hunter Sharing to Harvest. Most hunters donate more for a given year. All of our hunters are vetted in and tested. We make sure they can use their proper tackle throughout the year so that when they go out there, they're efficient. They have check climbing tree stands. They must have PA Hunter Ed and Bow Hunter Ed. And then we also do an interview just to make sure that they're the caliber people that we want walking the streets and in the woods of Upper Makefield. You know, make sure we represent you guys well. We also have the township issued ID cards, and we put placards on our vehicles so that everybody can recognize who we are and know that we're out there and not be concerned with us. So again, we're asking that, you know, the proposal be accepted. We're asking that, you know, we can get a proposal letter that we can hand out to the homeowners to kind of pick up more copies that show that you support us. With that, we also had last year's numbers. Last year, we took a total of 89 deer in two townships, which is Upper Makefield and Lower Makefield. Out of those, we donated 17 deer to Hunter Sharing to Harvest. And this is big. We donated 612 pounds of deer meat, which equates to roughly 2,448 meals that went to local food shelters, which is huge. And that's only a part of what we did with your support to allow us to do it. We also gave four deer to families in need that spoke to us, and we try to do that every year. If somebody lets us know, we try to help them out. That's really what I have for the report. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them. And again, I hope that if you guys would accept us back into the township to do another season with you of deer management.
Spot board.
I have a quick question. How were your numbers this year versus last year?
Actually, they were up a little bit from last year, which is good. Last year, they were actually down, and then this year, we had a little bit of a spike. So, you know, we're climbing. Some of the issues that we do currently have are properties. You know, the deer kind of know we're in there. So getting some surrounding properties would definitely help us into pulling more of the herd.
And how do you do that with just individual landowners, or is that through? Is there something the township could help?
I'm sorry. I didn't mean to cut you off. But yes, we would have to we would have to get some more properties to go. Some of the bigger properties like, you know, the Five Mile Woods, we have Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday. We understand why, so you can get local residents in there to enjoy the woods on the weekend. But getting more time in there, that there's a lot of deer on that property. Snipes property, you know, if we were able to get into there more, that's also got quite a herd in there that we could hunt. And then we're also working with Farmland Preservation on Leadham Track. And if we could get on some of the other farmland preservation properties, that would also be a big boost to the numbers.
Right. Thanks. That's all I had.
Ms. Lewis?
Yeah, I was going to make a motion so that we could discuss this formally. I move that we retain Boma for the 2023-2024 deer hunting season.
Second.
So now that it's on the, can I ask, you said we have 89 last year. Was that LMT and Upper Makefield or just LMT?
That was both townships. We actually shot 40 in Lower Makefield last year.
So 40 were LMT and 49 were Upper Makefield.
Actually, no. 41 were in Upper. We also have a property that we hunt in Newtown, which we took eight deer off of that property.
And that's, the lower Makefield number seems lower than it was last year. I'm feeling like it was like 60 last year. Am I wrong? Or was it 69 total?
I think it was 69 total. Last year was one of the hardest years. We really struggled last year between people getting into woods and different hunting-related issues getting out there with the woods. I can confirm those numbers with you. I don't have them on me right now.
Okay. Yeah, no, I'm interested. As you know, it's continuing to be, it's been a problem for a long time. So I've been a longtime supporter of Boma. I want you to take out as many deer as possible. You're welcome to sit off the back of my deck, but I know you can. I'm just kidding. But no, generally, I'm very supportive and been an advocate for you guys in other municipalities as well. So I want you to keep doing that. And if we can figure out ways to increase your yield, you know, we're certainly open to that. Finding additional properties is something we're definitely, you know, we want to be helpful with. They'd offered some properties. Are they the ones, are they okay, or are there issues?
Yeah, Jim, I don't know. And again, I know you noted some changes in 2023-2024. But as it relates to specific properties, But as it relates to specific properties and perhaps, you know, this notion of sort of increasing effectiveness. I don't know if you want to go over those in a little bit more detail, that the ones that were itemized in your in your addendum to the proposal, which was essentially just noting some changes, I guess, from at least the prior year's proposal. Some I think are reflective of things you've done in the past that for some reason were taken off, but then you're suggesting that they be added back on.
Yes.
So I don't know if you could maybe go over those in just additional detail. And then I don't, I mean, again, if the board has any ideas about you know, potential additional sites. You know, we could maybe just touch on those as well.
Well, yeah, I'll be happy to. Well, one I was talking about earlier was Snipes. The Snipes property is something that we ended up moving it back to a Saturday only. And before that, we used to have it whenever school was not in session, which was a big help because we could get out there on different days that school was closed. And, and it helped boost our numbers because usually when a school is closed, it's a holiday or something. The week after Christmas is typically closed. And we could get a great number of hunters in there and actually work out plans to harvest more deer. So that was one of the things that I would like to add is the fact that we get, you know, Saturdays and days that the school was off, get back on that property. I think that would be very helpful. And the other one is the property off of Lindenhurst and Fountain. I presented that last year and we were going to look into it. I resubmitted that this year with the same map showing that, you know, we, it is property that we've hunted. The reason that we stopped hunting it was because when I took over as president, I noticed it was not on our proposal. So I asked the guys, I talked to Kurt, and we removed it from the proposal just because it isn't approved by you guys. So we stopped hunting it. And then then COVID hit and we just kind of pushed it back a couple of years after that. And we'd like to get back on that property. That particular property was very, very good to us. I mean, we took a lot of deer off it.
And then the third item, just on the addendum, was, was something I guess the township had requested regarding a property at Rolloffs and Oxford Valley Road. I didn't know if you wanted to comment on that. There's some reference to that in your addendum as well.
Well, the problem with that is, you know, it's too close to homes. It's going to be very tough to get in, in there unless we could get in off of the path that goes through off of Oxford Valley Road. But then you got all the, the parks and all that stuff, which makes it very difficult for us to get in there and hunt. So I mean, part of our, our goal is to keep a low profile on our hunting situation and awareness to the public. So if we go in there where there's a lot of people from the public and kids out there and, you know, I don't know that that's a very good idea to promote Boma, if you will. There are other properties that we have that we, we have maps. I actually have a map that we were given when we first started. I had it laminated and our group is looking at that to see if we can pick properties off of that that we can come to you and actually say, hey, what about this area, that area? So we do have that and we are working on that.
Yeah, I don't know exactly, you know, all the different rules, but and I did hear you say that you're working with farmland. I know the farmers have the first right of hunting. And I really appreciate that they're willing to work with you guys. But on Woodside Road, there's a track of farmland that's part of farmland preservation. And then it abuts the cell towers. There, there are homes, I think that would be to the west. So I'd want you to be, you know, I'd like you to look at it and see if that would be an appropriate area because I know that has a lot of deer because I live over there and I hear the horns honking as the deer are crossing. And I unfortunately see some of the result of that. So.
Just, just to make sure I'm on a same page, that's the Black Farm?
I don't think it's the Black Farm. It's closer to Taylorsville Road. Taylorsville and Woodside.
Okay, right off of ninety-five there in the radio towers. Yeah, that's, we call that the Black Farm. We used that. We did, we did have that, but you know, Dennis would have to, you know, figure out what's going on with the farmer and and we would love to get back in there. We had it for a few years.
Dave, is that something that, that you can liaison with?
Yeah, happy, happy to do so. Yes, Supervisor Bunn.
And John, are you still farmland?
I am farmland this year. I can certainly ask about that property. I know there's a red tag program that the state runs that the farmers are able to, they're able to hunt in off deer season. So there's a limited number of deer that they're allowed to take out. And they get the first crack at those tags first. And then once those deers are taken out, then others can be brought in. I could certainly bring that up with farmland preservation in terms of when or if what the scheduling and I know that you've had deer blinds up there. And I also know, you know, there are a lot of number, a large number of deer coming from that farm onto Woodside because I see the dead deer on the side. But yeah, so we'll definitely find, there's also another property that's county property that I think we should also take a look at as well. We didn't get a lot of traction with the county, but we can certainly ask as well. It's
I think there's actually, I think there's a restriction on it.
Is there, is there a reason?
Tried that last year, didn't we? Or the year before?
Yeah. The way the, the land has actually been, the county is actually, and that's because I've had residents reach out that live back in there.
Regarding the red tag program, we, Boma is currently, we actually have five hunters that are part of the red tag program working under Dennis. Currently, the lead them track. So we are familiar with it. We are working directly with Dennis to get in there and you know, we made sure that we extended our insurance and whatnot, just to make sure that we were covered for the whole time that we're in.
Sure. Good, good to see you, sir. A couple, a couple of quick questions. I, I, do you work with, I don't, the red tag programs, I think it's through the game commission. The DCNR does their own things on state lands. Do you, do you work with them at all in terms of, you know, we're hearing number, you know, eighty-nine deer, you know, is the number you got versus do we have any idea about the total deer population in Lower Makefield area and like what, what we're looking at for reproduction rates and, and how we're managing it generally relative to the numbers that we're seeing? Are you able to work with those groups or get feedback from, from anyone at the state level who has these, these deer programs?
We, I could definitely reach out to some of the actual game commissioners themselves. And they can direct us to the right people. They just changed them over here in the lower part of the state. So, you know, we're, we're, we've been at a meeting. Most of Boma are bow hunter ed instructors and hunter trapper educators, myself and Dave Kimball and several others. So we go to the meetings where, you know, we talk to the game commission and they can definitely direct us in the right direction to what we need to get some answers for you.
Yeah, I think it would be great to do, not that we're doing this blindly, but I think it would be great to, to do an assessment to see how we're doing and where we might be able to, you know, you're talking about separate new, different properties and whatnot. And I know game commission won't be giving us detailed evaluation of every site in Lower Makefield. That's just not what they do. But if there's any data that they have or any, I don't know if criteria is the right word, or any guidance that they can provide to our program so that we can, we can work with you to, to do it that much better. Whether it's increasing numbers or focusing different ways, looking at male versus female, you know, what, you know, what, what type of deer we're getting, not what type, but male versus female and when and all that stuff. I think that would be beneficial because then it can, it can help us to do a little more scientific dive into, into our program to see how much better it can be. So, and then we can answer, you know, I get questions about what are the goals for the year and how, how many do we need to get and all that stuff? And I don't, I don't know that we have an answer for that yet. So I'd love to hear more about that. And I, I think you're in a position to, to ask some good questions, people.
Another good point to understand is Boma is not the only group hunting in the township. So I mean, they could give us an overall harvest number for the local township, which would be helpful to help us better understand really what we're, what the impact of hunters is doing throughout the entire township. So that number in itself might be helpful.
Yeah, that's a great, that's a great point. And then I will ask just some feedback I've gotten from a few folks, just to, so we can be, be even better than we are, have been. I've had some folks have some concern in certain areas. Okay. Certain, the nature preserve, what do we call it? Another Catherine Burke Nature Preserve. That's, that's one that is fairly often used by folks walking and throughout the year. So they've been, I guess, different people have different relationships with hunting and have different comfort levels with it, right? I grew up in Maine around it all the times. It doesn't bother me at all. But some folks have a concern in that particular area where they see game cameras or they might see feed that's fallen or something like that on the ground. So if we can in that specific area where it is more used than some other ones in terms of just passive recreation, if we can keep an eye out there to make sure that we are cognizant of the folks around us. And I know you guys try, try really hard to do that. So I just, just as a courtesy reminder. Say again?
Where was that, where was that again?
So we refer to it as the Catherine Burke Nature Preserve, but it's right along the, it's direction am I pointing here?
It's, it's north, north, north.
Right over here. It's right down the street from the township building, behind the, behind the pool and the schools and all that. It connects along the train tracks. So there's a path back there that people use. If you've ever heard us mention the silt pile over the last several years, it connects to that. So we just, that's just an area we want to be cognizant of because it does get more foot traffic than others. Obviously, Five Mile Woods is another one we, we were careful about because that is a popular place to recreate, but just stuff like that would be appreciated. And if you have, again, feedback, any ideas on how we can do things better to to make it easier on you guys to, to put in those best practices, appreciate that too.
We definitely can do that. I mean, it's one of the things that the group has decided. I mean, we are, we are still going to put some stands out in the woods, but we're, we're considering this year going to basically a hundred percent climbers. And the reason for that is it's less of an impact. If we're not in the woods, there's nothing out. And again, we're going. In Five Mile Woods, we, we do a lot of hunting towards the back of the property where most people don't even go. That's why we wanted to park off the back road off of Route One and walk in. So that's kind of off of the beaten path. But occasionally you'll get, you know, the guy that wants to be behind on his bicycle that will cruise back there and go by us. So you know, it's not like we're completely unseen. As far as the property behind the township building there, we'll definitely, we'll definitely stay off the beaten path and try to keep it, you know, back. We did have a stand this year that was probably maybe twenty-five yards off the path. And if you were walking it, you could see it. So we'll be considerate to that and make sure that that doesn't happen moving forward.
Appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Public comment?
There aren't any in the room. I'm sorry, sorry.
Nobody in the room? Nobody online? Hearing no further comments or call the question, all those in favor of Boma's present proposal and extending their permission for another year, signify by saying aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Ayes have a five zero. Thank you, Jim.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Take care, everyone.
You too.
Item number nine is a presentation for, from EMAC. We have representative from EMAC.
They're, they're approaching the table.
Great.
Good evening, everybody. EMAC is back. We were here a couple of months ago. For those of you not familiar with EMAC, EMAC is the acronym for Electric Electronic Media Advisory Council. I'm Jill Laurenitis. To my right is Dave Kelleher, Vice Chair, Anne Schreiber, and watching at home, we have our members Fred Young and Josh Waldorf. We're here tonight to present three recommendations our committee recently voted on. For the past six months, EMAC has been researching and assessing new platforms and tools to further improve the township's communication and engagement with residents and bring our technology up to the present in ways residents are utilizing it today. We feel these three recommendations are necessary to improving services, building community trust and increasing overall satisfaction among residents. Another key piece is reaching beyond the traditional scope of communication channels to make fair assessment and ensure all voices in the community are heard on issues through scientific surveying and other tools. At a public meeting on Thursday, May eleventh, 2023, at the LMT building, EMAC voted to make the following recommendations to the Board of Supervisors. Recommendation one, we recommend that the township engage the Zen City platform for fees not to exceed $26,000 budgeted for one year with the option to renew based on the satisfaction and discretion of the township manager and board. Recommendation number two, we recommend the development of a mobile township app that would improve communications with residents and complement and support the website and other channels with more immediate and accessible information on traffic and road closures and repair, weather hazards, police actions, any special township events that would impact routine travel and activities within the community and a better reporting procedure for issues. Recommendation number three, we recommend that the township evaluate proposals from two app companies we researched and assessed called Info Grove and Apex Mobile, which had similar features and fair pricing. We wanted to give a very brief overview and some explanation of Zen City and its platform. So Zen, Zen City is used currently by about two hundred local governments in four countries affecting about forty million residents. It's a platform for community engagement. We'll explain what that means in a minute, but also we wanted to thank Mr. Kratzler for bringing Zen City to the table because it's a very important tool, we believe, in improving communication and again, assessing public opinion. So using, the way Zen City works is basically they use advanced technology and methodology to help local governments make decisions by analyzing millions of data points that aggregate citizen feedback using AI. Two of the main tools that they use for doing this are there on the right side of the screen. The first one is Zen City Organic, which is like a social listening tool. It monitors conversations across publicly available sources, including social media and news channels and aggregates and presents the data in a reporting dashboard. So you can see what residents are talking about and how they're feeling about certain issues. The second tool involved in Zen City is the Zen City Community Survey Tool. This uses census data to target a representative sample of the community so that you're reaching a full spectrum of residents in a scientific way. We feel that the investment in communication and technologies over the last decade has been minimal for the township. So this is well worth it. And it would be very helpful in deciding several key issues in the next, you know, six months to a year, including the potential local earned income tax, Patterson Farm, open space preservation and park planning relating to Mackles Field and Snipes. And again, not to get too into the weeds here, but this is a little bit more information about how the surveys are conducted. And one of the things that we really liked about this was that it helps township stay, stay organized on key issues. When you go to take a survey on Zen City, the way that the online surveys are set up, you go to a landing page and the survey is on the left. And on the right are all the important And on the right are all the important documents and supporting information that go along with whatever issue that survey is about. So it gives the resident the opportunity to educate themselves on whatever that issue is before taking the survey and get their questions answered and so forth. I think that, you know, when there's been a lot of debate online on social media channels and so forth about issues, there's not really currently very much information on the township website to point people to, to say, you know, here's where to go to get the facts, which has resulted, you know, in some misinformation and frustration and so forth. And, you know, this would that part of the Zen City Community Surveys would kind of tackle that issue. The questionnaires, questionnaires are formatted with the expertise of Zen City professionals. And they're purposely crafted to remove common barriers to participation like time and language, and they're accessible and inclusive. And the results are in real time and they can be run year round. We were impressed by that. And then this is the pricing information regarding the township app companies that we're recommending. We thought both of these companies were very similar. We brought this to the table when we were here a couple of months ago. They both involve one-time setup fees. Info Grove is $7,900 and Apex Mobile is 7,500. And then after that, there's an annual maintenance fee that's less depending on what plan you choose. But again, we thought these companies were very similar and maybe left it to leaving it to the township staff to decide who they would like to work with. It might also depend on the, the availability of these companies and what they've got going on in their schedules when the township is ready to move on this project. And again, this is just kind of reviewing what we presented last time about, you know, why we think a township app is a good idea. You know, basically for improving citizen engagement and, and making the technology available, how people are using it. Most people are, you know, 87% of users spend their mobile time on, on apps. So we think this would be a good addition. And these are some of the reasons that the more popular modules on both Info Grove and Apex, you know, as far as like assessing certain information and using it for these reasons. And that's pretty much it. I don't know, Mr. Kratzler, if you have anything to add about Zen City?
Yeah, just a couple items. And Alon was trying to join us and I don't know if he's experiencing some technical difficulty at this point, but Alon is with Zen City. So he was intending to be here to address any questions that the board may have relative to the tool. But before I get into specifics there, just for purposes of sort of a discussion on sort of the financial aspects of, of the recommendations that, that EMAC is, is bringing forward. As the board is aware, in the adopted 2023 budget, you had allocated $50,000 to EMAC for purposes of the website. As we know, based on EMAC's prior appearance before the board, the cost of the website came in substantially under that. I think it was $2,400. So all of the in essence, proposed recommendations which would, you know, bring us forward in the interest of, of trying to better engage the citizenry here in Lower Makefield Township, Zen City, the website and, and the mobile app, even the most costly of the options as it relates to the mobile app, all could be accommodated within the allocated funds for for these sort of technologies slash sort of communication engagement enhancements that, that EMAC is, is bringing forth. Just generally sort of on Zen City, again, Jill highlighted two of sort of the functionalities. I did have an opportunity to use Zen City in Susquehanna Township in Dolphin County. We found great, you know, value in sort of the, the aggregation of the data that would occur through what's being referred to as Zen City Organic in trying to make sure that we were better informed beyond those that sort of participate, you know, most frequently in sort of traditional channels. So you know, generally, you know, Zen City, you know, part, part of their sort of mission is, you know, getting beyond what they call the same 10 people, right? The same 10 people commenting on every issue and not necessarily that vocal minority at times being reflective of, of sort of the larger, broader perspective of, of a community. And so that tool was very helpful from that standpoint. The community surveying tool is, as Jill said, you know, would allow us to be a little bit more organized and have things sort of concentrated in terms of our, our surveying of, of folks. Again, Jill highlighted a number of policy-related issues that, you know, the township may be considering in the future. So that type of engagement would, 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 and data for you to make sort of a data-driven, you know, decision would, 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 would be helpful. And, you know, the, the benefit of engaging sort of Zen City on all of these issues is they're specifically operating in the local government space. So in addition to sort of the functionality of the tools that they are able to put forth, they're also working with municipal jurisdictions throughout the country. And so when they're formulating sort of potential applications of the tools, they're sort of speaking the language of local government. So it's not someone that doesn't have sort of the contextual understanding of the issues that jurisdictions, small, you know, medium-sized and large face throughout, throughout the country as it, as it relates to trying to engage on, on these issues. And then there's two additional tools that are part of the package that we didn't really highlight, but one is, is called Zen City Engage, which is essentially creating a space where you can do sort of digital engagement on specific issues, whether it be project-based issues or, or, or policy or topic-based issues. And then there's also an opportunity to do some sort of benchmarking or sentiment sort of evaluation through Zen City Experience Surveys as well. And so in addition to the, sort of the functionality of the tool, it, it also comes with sort of the professional consulting of the Zen City team to, you know, really leverage the, the, the tool and make sure that it's sort of contextually appropriate to, to, to local governments. And so again, my past experience in working with this tool has been helpful. It's been helpful to the governing bodies that, that I've, you know, had the opportunity to work with. And they've even broadened sort of the functionality of the system beyond what, you know, I, I initially was using the tool for, which was more of the sort of organic and, and sort of listening tool aspect of that. So I appreciate the work that, that EMAC has, has provided in, in looking at this and critically evaluating it and and, and providing not only context as it relates to its applicability to local government, but its potential applicability to Lower Makefield Township in particular. So so thank you, the three of you for, for your work on, on, on that. And so again, happy to answer any questions that, you know, that the board may have. These folks, I'm sure, are happy to answer any questions that you have as well. Alon just texted me. He's, he's trying to get in. So again, there's somebody from Zen City. If you have more technical questions on, on sort of the tools. But again, all of this can be accomplished within the allocated resource and, 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 you know, move us forward in, in a way that allows us to not only sort of enhance the, the, the sort of core tool that we use, the, the website, but, but sort of add on to that and, and, and provide more of an engagement platform for folks. So let me see if he can get in or not. I don't, I don't know, but.
For purposes of the anticipated motion, is the 26,000 just for Zen City?
Yes.
Okay. So then the apps are on top of that. Just want to make sure. So if, if the board is inclined, it would seem to me the, the motion would be to approve the recommendations from EMAC regarding the retention of Zen City and approving all three recommendations with the third not to exceed $16,200 the first, first year for the application to be determined, app to be determined by the township staff. I use that number because I think that's the higher number of the two of Info Grove, if I'm not mistaken. Does that make sense?
Say that number again, Dean.
$16,200. 7,900 plus 8,300 is the top number for that. And that's the highest, higher of the two, I believe. So that is, that is correct. Okay. So just want to make sure we have the motion right and then I'll back away. Who wants to make that motion?
So Mr. Chair, if I could, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the Electronic Media Advisory Council's recommendations, specifically Zen City for social media monitoring and engagement with a not to exceed price, was there not?
Can I hear you bring your mic right up a little closer?
And, and to the second recommendation to select a mobile app provider at the discretion of the township manager in consultation with all relevant IT folks with a not to exceed of $17,000. I'll give you a cushion there. There's not a third part of the recommendation.
I don't think for financial purposes.
With that, that covers all of them.
I'll second.
Motion made by Supervisor Lewis, second by Supervisor McCartney to approve the recommendations of EMAC with the sum not to exceed, did I hear $16,000?
$16,200, I believe.
Oh, yeah, actually Supervisor Lewis increased that to 17,000, as he said, to give some more cushion for the app. The first, first part is 26,000 for the retention of Zen City pursuant to the recommendation. And the second part would be, well, first, you're accepting all three recommendations of EMAC. With, with the proviso, the Zen City's amount would be 26,000. And, and then the associated app to be determined by the township manager and, and relevant staff in an amount not to exceed $17,000. This is all for one year. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Dave, just to confirm, both of those meet underneath the 50,000.
They do. So yeah, so we take the website cost of the 2,400, the max cost on the app, and then the engagement of Zen City. Yes, it's under the, under the budget of $50,000 that the, that the township has allocated for, for these improvements. And I think, you know, that, you know, again, the, the EMAC has done great work, but, you know, sort of implementation and, and then providing sort of guidance and consultation as we go forward with implementation. I think you'll, you'll have a, a good amount of work potentially in the second half of the year as well, just helping us, you know, sort of make sure that we're, you know, proceeding appropriately.
I, yeah. I still had another que, are you froze? Fred looks like he's froze. Oh, no, he's not. Oh.
I can't, I can't hear you too well.
Oh, no, I just, I just, I did have one other question for you guys. So after, and this is for the, you know, after one year, how are you going to get, gauge the success of how it's working? Are we going to be able to, you know, come up with a demographic as far as how many users, what the usage is? I guess so then the next year we can make it, you know, a decision on whether or not it's something that's being used effectively.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, both, all those tools will, will provide us with the ability to do an assessment from a user standpoint and and then, you know, there'll be sort of anecdotal feedback as well, based on sort of the actual experience and, and sort of the degree of feedback that we're getting, yes. That was all.
Pastor Lewis?
Okay. Couple of questions. First on Zen City, you mentioned that it's open social media. So that includes Nextdoor, right? And, but would not include things like private social media groups on Facebook such as Lower Makefield is a great place to live and Lower Makefield is a great place to live uncensored. Lower Makefield is. Yeah.
Unless those groups give permission to Zen City to be in, in that, in those groups.
And you think that's something that possibly could happen?
Uh, it's possible.
Okay.
I mean, that, that is our intent to, you know, try to, again, gain access to, you know, these, these platforms or these groups where folks are, are sort of conversating on, on township issues, yes.
So I have not actively used social media monitoring tools in a while. I'm very familiar with the space, understand some of the technical limitations, which is why I asked the Lower Makefield is a great place to live as sort of an exemption or making that open for their. A couple technical questions for things that I see down the road because we've made hopefully some really good constructive decisions. But there's some things we're going to need to be thinking about that we haven't. There was a CMS that was included in the first discussion with the website development. These app developers appears have a secondary CMS, which means the content might have to be added in two places. Is there a way, and this is something you should consider when reviewing the two app developers, and I, I could go into the details, but you, you don't necessarily want that from me. Is there a way to make sure that you're using one CMS so that you're creating content in one location and it goes to the channels, whether it's web or mobile app that, that you want so that that's available?
That's a good point. We did talk about that with both app companies. They deal with the more common CMS WordPress and so forth, not this particular one that our website developer is using. But they both felt confident that there are ways around it. You can also frame the existing web pages inside the app if needed. But yes, there, we're aware of that, that issue. So we're not adding more admin work.
Okay.
Yeah.
And that's something you think you can, I won't.
Yes, I do. I feel confident that it's workable. Yep.
Okay. I've got a sort of a longer term issue for us all collectively to think about. The mobile app introduces a third primary username and password associated with township business. And that becomes secondary after OpenGov, when I can go in and make a permit request, which I include all. If I could make a commercial now, if you need to do a building permit with Lower Makefield, please, please use OpenGov's the new app that we've added onto our website, you know, forms and requests, very easy to do, very integrated into commercial, community pass, which is the way in which we all engage with the pool. You should not have multiple usernames and passwords to interface with one organization. That's from a user experience perspective morally wrong. I know that because I sit in user experience meetings every week and I know I'm not a user experience expert, but I know that one. And they're very there needs to be a strategy to have one single sign-on for all LMT business. And if you think this is too difficult, there is a, an app in the Ukraine. Ukraine's now going through a war with Russia. It's called DIA, D-I-I-A. And it allows Ukrainian residents to report on damage caused by war. That process, as well as building permits, by the way, and that's nationwide. What's really neat about that is they have one app, one user ID. It covers all of Ukrainian electronic business. And they're able to do thumbs up and thumbs down on national issues. It's a very powerful, compelling app. Challenge they have is they have a 50% uptake of the residents using it. So 50% of Ukrainian people, again, they've gone through a tremendous war. And we wish them all the best and want to keep supporting them. But only 50%, that means that there's a whole segment of the population that's not engaged with the mobile apps, that's not getting their voice. And believe it or not, there are people that don't engage in social media. These are folks that have become, who have left social media or have reduced their volume of activity. It's important we listen to everybody and make sure that we have a plan to get our mobile app and our newsletter and email program such that we're reaching as many of the 11,000 households and 33,000 people as we can. Just to make sure that, A, the more people know, the better stuff that they can give us in terms of insight. A lot of times we get discussion elements and we say, well, have you thought about X, Y, and Z? And they're like, I hadn't thought about that. Or, and then they come at with a different way or a different perspective that I hadn't thought of. And it's sort of crowdsourcing people's thoughts. We definitely want to do that. But to do that, we really need to coordinate. So I'm giving you a yes, but and you'll remember, because I'll remember, and next year we'll talk. And always willing to help if you have questions about how to get people upkeep or any of that stuff.
So you're, what you're saying is you would like EMAC to develop a long-term plan and strategy?
Prob, probably at this point. So what we don't have in the township, and this is, if I can take the Ukrainian example, is we don't have a data strategy as a township. So where are all the sources of data that we have? And some of those sources need to be heavily protected and not accessible by people. And some of them need to be made very accessible by people. But they all need to be secure in all, all circumstances. And so we need to have a data strategy so that we can bring as much of the data forward for people to use in terms of what they need to know to conduct business with the township and get access to the data. There's a tremendous amount of data that's at the county level that you can access, that we have links to, but isn't necessarily. There's so much of it. We need to find ways to make it easier for people to find it. That means improving the search on our website, which is part of the improvement in that area. It's also looking at other kinds of search and other things to find out what are people interested in to show them more of that. What are people interested in to show them more of that? Or what are the things that they're not finding that they want to find? So some of that is stuff that you'd ask people in a survey, and some of it's a focus group kind of stuff. Um, and I think there needs to be a general strategy about data storage, data management, and then accessibility, right? How do we make all of this accessible to people? Um, and how do we make sure that we're doing a good job marketing, right? So we have a huge, uh, some really exciting events coming up this summer. Uh, Art in the Park, which I don't want to steal the thunder of that, but we're going to have, uh, really interesting stuff going on. We want to make sure that every one of the thirty three thousand people know that that's available. And remember, we're competing against, uh, people's next best entertainment or attention alternative. So we have to be compelling with what we're saying to people, but we definitely want to make sure they get access to it. Um, so those are the kinds of things to think about. So there's a a data strategy component, right? How do all the pieces fit together? And then there's a traditional marketing component, which is how do we communicate to people so that they know this stuff? And and I think that's something that collectively township staff can work with EMAC on. Um, two thirds of some of the data stuff is township staff or more. But some of the usability, engagement, marketing, communications is definitely in the EMAC space. That's where the the two thirds mixes the other way, in terms of where the work effort is.
Uh, just going back to the multiple sign-ons issue, I think, and I don't want to, I think Monica is here. When when it was time to renew Community Pass, I believe they looked at OpenGov. Mm-hmm. As a, as, you know, switching over to that, but it was so costly that that was a deterrent at the time. Again, EMAC wasn't really involved in those conversations, and we've talked among ourselves that, yes, there should be a long-term plan, but just wasn't happening. So, um, we're happy to, uh, provide some guidance on that going forward. I think I absolutely agree with all of your points. I think they're very good ones, and, um, I'm sure that the committee is, will be on board with that, too.
Thanks.
Any other comments by the board?
Fred, if you don't mind. Excuse me. Well, thank, welcome, and again, thank you for the work that you're doing. Um, I'll I'll do a slightly shorter version of that. Um, I I am. Long-term strategy, I think, is really important. We've had this conversation at previous meetings about making sure, you know, where we have overlap between OpenGov or Community Pass or any of the, uh, social media approaches that we use, the website, whatever it is that they agree, and that we're not jumping around to ten different spots to make sure we get to things. So this single sign-on, single message, I think that that's number one across the board, um, for me. Because, you know, it might, I think all of us in our daily lives like to, one-stop shopping is is nice, especially when it comes to Township Matters, when you're trying to figure out, you know, when you go on Facebook and you see, I saw probably five different questions today about, hey, where do I find information about this, right? And whatever it may be, and you'll get ten different answers, and two of them might be right, you know? So it's, that's all important, that it's, one, that's one-stop shopping. Two, it's user-friendly, easy to use, easy to get to, user experience, to use the, uh, proper term here. Um, but all that's, all that's very important. Um, I'll be honest, Zen City, I'm a little bit concerned, um, generally about the approach that Zen City uses, because it does use machine learning and AI to track and surve- genuinely, it surveils. Um, I'm not a conspiracy theorist by any means, but, you know, it it's, it it, when I read up on what Zen City does versus what it can do and how it could be used, I'm I'm concerned about, um, privacy for for our residents. I'm concerned about the approach they take. I think there are some great tools in there that we can take advantage of, that maybe we have an OpenGov, maybe we don't, that we should look to. But I do think it's important to understand what limitations they have on data access, what they can do with our data. It's not an American company, it's based in Israel, I believe. Um, so you you have the international issues. Um, and then coupling that with an app. And I I was looking at the numbers in your presentation, I can't, I feel so out of it now, because so many people use use apps instead of web browsers these days. I just don't like apps, um, because they, again, they there's, they track and they're always taking data and they're not asking, well, they might ask you for it, but you you just kind of click it so you can get access to whatever you need to, and then they run away with your information. Um, I don't love that. So I would look, before I would be comfortable signing off on this approach, and I and I appreciate the approach. I don't want you to think otherwise, but I just want to make sure that there are controls in place so that we're protecting our residents from potential, uh, issues related to info, you know, their information security is what I'm, what it gets down to. And I don't, I don't see that just yet in in the information that we have from them, and they're not, you know, and I look up reviews of all these things to see what other people say. But in the end, what Zen City does, not the apps, but what Zen City does is they use machine learning and AI to surveil all these areas and collect information and then develop strategies based off of AI, you know, chat GPTs and is, that's what we're all talking about these days. It's kind of sort of similar to that. So I just want to be thoughtful and careful about how we address that. So at, I think personally, I would prefer a little more information about that before we take that step. But.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it's too bad Alana's not able to get into the meeting, because he would be the best person to address that. Well, I felt the same way as you, Dan, when we first started talking about this, very uncomfortable with the the data gathering part. Um, I think what kind of, um, I mean, we've been discussing this for months, uh, and I think what kind of helped me was that when they're aggregating that data, like the social listening is only a part, a part of what they do. Uh, when they aggregate data, it's from public sources. I mean, it's from people commenting on news articles, it's from, you know, that kind of thing. It's not, and it's supposedly anonymous.
Oh, anonymous as well, yeah.
Um, you know, they're not tying it, when it's reporting the information on the dashboard, it's not reporting, oh, this person said this, and it's it's not that, it's aggregating the comments and what was said.
Yeah.
So I felt more comfortable with that.
So to your point, um, I think if they were allowed, I'm not, I'm not sure it's totally public, the totally just monitoring public, if they got into, Lower Makefield's a great place to live, you're obviously familiar with that versus like.
Well, let's just use that as an example. So that, I mean, that is a private group, but it's also a very public group. Um, there, I mean, actually Karen Klein Schaefer, the other admin on the group, is here tonight to learn more about Zen City. We will need to have a conversation, Dave, Karen, and I, uh, about, you know, to take this a step further, to see if it's that, you know, really something that we want to do and and what our members want to do. Um, so this is really the first time we're, um, publicly discussing it. Um, so that's that's on us, you know, if we want to make, you know, if we decide to involve our members in that decision, um, so that they know what's going on, um, that's something that we're talking about.
I appreciate, and then the the only, maybe I'm a skeptic or cynic or whatever, but when when we look at, you know, they 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 only aggregate the data, they never look at, uh, what is the, I should know this. There was a Netflix documentary recently, this was social delight, not.
Uh, with what's named Tristan, um, yeah.
Yeah, well, one of my high school friends was actually, and was is prominent in that, in the, uh, randomly, um, a former Facebook, Apple, Uber, et cetera guy, um, and talking about everything there. And I think we'd want some guarantees that if we're going to go down that road, that that's actually the case. Because I'm naturally cynical about this these days, because a lot of folks say that, but don't actually deliver that.
Might be able to help a little on this. Um, so the AI and machine learning that Zen City's doing is largely around sentiment analysis. Um, so it's trying to impute what's the tone, are you happy or unhappy with the roundabouts on, uh, Edgewood Road? By the way, I love it, just in case you're wondering, wonderful, right? Traffic safety, great. Um, but that's what that AI is doing. When people post online, you have to realize a lot of things are happening as it relates to your privacy that you might not think about. Um, and I, gosh, I don't know how much I want to tell you to freak out. But if you post something online, right? You're saying, hey, it's me, this is what I'm saying.
I'm signed in, that's my name.
Signing in, right, right? All of that is open web, right? That's all harvestable, but it's not structured data in the same way that Facebook knows, okay, you logged in, you did X, Y, and Z, and they can tell you everything you did. It's down to your individual level. Zen City isn't of scale where you would be concerned about its collection, because it's not collecting PII about you. It's not designed to build a portfolio. It says, that says, okay, James McCartney lives at, uh, X Street in this town. And by the way, here's his phone number, email, here's the last ten sites he visited that use this particular network. By the way, we noticed he went to the San Jose Mercury News, he wrote an article about, uh, interest rates. Does that mean he's an intender for a home equity loan? Possibly, that's where the AI comes in. But all that collection of data, that's not happening here with Zen City. What they're doing is they're going out to social media sites and broader stuff. And what they're trying to do is collect comments around Lower Makefield public policy and and community stuff. The challenge that they have is it's very hard to find that in open web. People aren't necessarily talking as much as we'd like to think that they are. They're not talking that much about public policy in Lower Makefield. They'll talk about national stuff relentlessly, they can't even talk about state or county. So they're not getting that in a way that would compromise a person's individual privacy, because the person's already relinquished that by posting it. And they're not, and I hope they're not using this, that the data, and I would assume our contract means the data is our data, not their data, it's not.
That's.
O-mango or any of that stuff, right? I have language if you need that.
Yeah.
Uh, the contract on it.
Okay.
Same thing with the apps, too.
Yeah, yeah, the apps are, that's another thing, too.
Yeah.
That's why with Apple and the iOS, you have the right to opt out of tracking. So some of these apps are pernicious in that they will drop in a beacon. And I say pernicious, but on the other side of this equation, how do you get that location data that you can sell to marketers? Somebody's got to collect that.
Right.
So, um, those are all legitimate, valid concerns, much larger level, national level, and it's the reason why, you know, at the US, we need a comprehensive privacy reform with many of the things that are being done in Europe, which I know I get in trouble for by saying that, but, yeah. So don't, I don't think you have to worry about this here in this circumstance. You do have to worry generally, and I can really scary if you'd like, uh, but not late in this particular issue.
Thank you Supervisor Lewis, that was a very good thorough explanation, no, it really was, about the differences in that data collection as, you know, opposed to some, like a giant like Facebook. I think that all of us are very aware of, like, what was covered in that documentary with all the scary stuff that, about your data being collected and how AI is evolving, and we're all very aware of that. But I think we're also trying to use, I mean, these social media apps and and groups and so forth, they're they're just, um, so integrated into our society. We're trying to make the best of of it as we can. That's what we're trying to do, is focus on the positive stuff that goes with it and serve residents better by.
I get, did they?
Communication.
Did, in this whole process, did they provide a, uh, sample user agreement or anything like that? Like basically a contract that we could?
Zen City?
Zen City, yeah.
Um, we have a.
I mean, it's it's in, there's, there is a document in the, um, in your packet, um, which is, uh, sort of terms and conditions, which is attached to the, uh, the cost proposal.
That's an order form. Oh, here we go.
While he's looking at that, I just have a quick question. So is the is the success of this app based on data that's being pulled from private user groups on Facebook? Or is it, is, what's this is, where where does the the data come from? So if.
No, I mean, I would say that's just a sort of a component of it. Again, that that was sort of the foundational component, like, so when I first.
Component.
When I first engaged with with them, you know, they they were largely sort of a listening tool to a certain extent, collecting, aggregating, uh, and, um, you know, again, not not personally identifiable, but but making, anonymizing the data, those kinds of things, to John's point, sort of, you know, sentiment in general. The the tools that they've added beyond that aspect, um, are things that, you know, could be useful for us. And a- again, surveying component, for example. I mean, we we, you know, I assume we've used things like Survey Monkey, things of that nature in the past. Uh, again, not, uh, overly sophisticated, just just sort of basic. Um, you know, there's probably, um, uh, you you know, when we get the data, there's no sort of backend professional services. So as part of this, again, it's not just access to a tool, it's also access to data analysts as well. And so if there are specific policy-related issues that you want a true data analyst, we don't, let's just be honest, we don't have internal data analysts here at the township, right? I mean, John is our best data analyst that 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 we have, um, based on his experience and and his professional work. Um, so there is a, there is a professional services component as well that 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 we're getting, not only on the social listening aspect or the social media listening aspect, but also, um, but also on on the survey tool, on, you know, how do you create sort of digital environments to, um, you know, present a project or or or, uh, an issue and 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 those those kinds of things. So there's value beyond the tool. It's not a tool that we're just going to get and somebody's going to say, okay, well, here you go, you got access to a tool. There's a whole professional services component that deals with data analytics that's going to help us interpret the information and and format things in a way to try to collect as much, um, you know, good information and good data, uh, as as, you know, as possible.
Yeah, and I think my only concern would be is if we're tailoring this, kind of, it sounded like you said, towards the silent majority of the township, integrating some user groups that are private on Facebook might cloud that data. So my preference would be that those groups not be included in any kind of integration with the app.
Yeah, and and they don't, and and Alana has actually been able to join here, he's he's now on. And so, Alana, there there were some questions about, um, sort of data security-related issues. Um, uh, again, sort of data aggregation, uh, anonymizing data, those kinds of things. Perhaps you can speak to that, um, you you will be able to speak to that better than 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 us. You're muted, Alana.
Okay, everyone can use very much for, uh, language. It gives me the opportunity to share a bit about our work, um, regarding the data security and the, the AWE's store data, so I can tell you that all of the data is stored in, in AWS and Missouri in the US. Nothing is, uh, out and we can, uh, get all this data on, uh, anytime that you want. And of course, uh, it is all available for you in the software and anything you need. Previous data from previous years, I think that's, anytime that you call to, I only about professional services as a specialist. And we can get all the data, and regarding the security, I can share with you the documents in the highest level of security. And and a, and one more important thing to note, that it is all publicable resources. And we don't gather information, it is not, uh, viewable to anyone, and just open, uh, Google, Facebook, Twitter, and just put it online regarding the minimization of it, so just to understand, all of the data that we collect is automatically anonymized, meaning that no one can actually see who is the person, uh, that, um, is interacting. And that's for the purpose that it's not what we are here to aggregate. We are base, we are basing our analytics, not on the individual level, but then the tendencies, the trends, the what's going on in the overall perspective, it is statistically valid proportion of it. So that means that, uh, the individual, the one person who reacted to something and is interested only in the matter of whether it's a friend or a conversation, a topic that keeps someone writing, you want to give me this, um, consolidation of the data. And and despite all the data that you will see will be anonymized, you cannot, uh, express a specific person. Uh, neither, neither could be. For that matter.
You want me to mention this?
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, it, well, go ahead, John.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I I went back into the contract section five two, and we're helping you, uh, Alana, uh, from over here. Um, they say that all data is the sole property of the customer. So any content that we create, now, anything someone posts, and that's in the open web, that's subject to being accessible by anybody. So no one really owns that data other than the person who posts it and the site that that may host it. Um, and then the agreement does say that they acknowledge that Zen City does not require any personal data or PII to be provided in order to provide the license program, and that we don't need to provide them any personal data of people. Um, so from that perspective, in this area, it's not a problem. We also have to check the app developers so that they're not tracking location and reselling that.
Correct, and the, and I, the meaning of the data, and I believe that what section five two is also referring to is just like this, all are deliverables, meaning are the reports that we do write for you, the analytics, the insights, uh, the engagement, um, project and initiative that we run for the city is your, uh, these are your. These are your resources, these are your property. We don't use any of it, not for marketing purposes, not for internal purposes unless you permit this to us on a, on a. Ad hoc purposes, meaning not an overall a priori consent, but then ad hoc consent if you want this. And, and that's it. So all, so obviously not the data that we collect. All of it's so property, but also what to deliver to you, back to you is also world property. We do not.
Dave, this might be for you, the, the section five one. And the same thing where it says customer grants Zen City a non-exclusive transferable perpetual worldwide. And royalty free license to use any data or information provided by customer for use in buyer in connection with the license program. Any information collected and or any analysis of any such information conducted by the license program.
Yeah, the license program would be the place to start. And I think, consistent with what John and I saw, five two then pairs it down from there. That would be my interpretation. I, I don't know, John, if you agree with that, but I think that's, that's where we start.
License program would be the defined term.
Yes, that's, that's the way I would look at it. First you start with that and then it goes down from there into five two.
And license program is limited to products and services licensed by Zen City to the customer. So it's the stuff that they're providing us.
How many users are you anticipating downloading the app first year?
These are two recommendations. So Zen City is about the social media monitoring.
Oh, I see.
Yeah.
The absolute difference.
Big difference.
Okay.
Two recommendations.
I understand.
Yep.
But. Go ahead, Alon.
No, just to. To maybe explain about the, the software, this is what we call a software as a service solution. So you don't need to download anything. Actually, there is all the infrastructure, all the backstage work is on our end. You just need to enter it online like, like Gmail for that purpose. Or like you enter, you get a username and a password that you choose for yourself. So you don't need to download anything and there's no data that is pulled in your, your computer or the. The couch of the computer for that matter. And we can bring you basically. Our G code is A user, but O is for David. And the city manager will tell, we will give you.
I, I also just wanted to address Supervisor's McCartney's concern about. I think what you were trying to say is if some of the social listening, if there are people who are very, very vocal constantly. Like, how do you filter that out from all of the other data that you, how do you balance the data when you're social? In the social listening part of the tool? So you don't get the equivalent of like ballot stuffing. You know what I'm saying? Does that make sense? Can you, can you explain that a little bit, Alon? How it kind of aggregates and make sure the data is, is fair and, and the reporting that it produces?
It becomes very interesting because this is exactly where we're heading. A first, as a zoom or a bit like a, an highlight of perspective, the social monitoring is one of the tools that we currently utilizing. Meaning that we also have the survey capabilities that you're going to receive and the engagement processes that it actually gives. Or puts back the vocal minority, or as we call it, the same kind of people that you possibly probably hear. Back in the right perspective of the fashion and need to be addressed, but in the right perspective to it. And that means that you get to see a much more substantive or greater visibility of your community. Based on the census, based on the different. Segments on your, of the township of your community. And, and, and that's part of different models and methodologies to run with, with you. If we're scrutinizing about the social monitoring tool and our platform capability is really the, the technology of it. So what we do is we actually have set up tools to detect if it's a reoccurring. Voice or reoccurring data we collect and we put it in a different perspective. We can annotate it, we can exclude it from the conversation. Now, if you want it, if you want it to be excluded, of course, this is something we work with our partners on a day to day basis, really whenever we need it. So it's something that we know how to detect in advance and also to detect when you need, when you want us to. Have a special, what we call like investigation about a specific data or specifically going for, if you want us to maybe not, not be. Part, not to be part of the data. This is something that our platforms keep on practicing and maintaining. It is something that we are very proud of achieving the highest level of accuracy. And the highest level of data that we aggregate and then the. As level of accuracy on sentiment analysis and getting the right data when, when coming.
So just to clarify, Jill, so if, if, if one individual makes a thousand comments. Or a thousand individuals make a common comment, all of that data is put aside. And it's, it's, it's processed differently with by the algorithm? Because it's easy to take a user group. We know this within lower makefield township and they can manipulate data if they organize, right? So is the AI going to be able to separate the difference between one user making a thousand comments? Or a thousand users kind of making the same comment or pushing a certain agenda? Is it going to be able to sort through that data? And that's why I'd rather none of that social stuff or, or private user groups be involved in any of that data feed. Because it can corrupt what the outcome of the, of the data is.
I'm sure that they've come across this gazillion times, but I don't have the exact answer from my understanding. Yes, especially if you have one person commenting at that.
That's easy.
That's easy. But I see what you're saying. You can definitely organize a group and, you know, again, the equivalent of ballot stuffing. I, I don't know. Have you had any experience with that in your?
I mean, I, I think we talked about this issue a little bit, just from a technology standpoint in, in terms of. Again, sort of IP address, right? Didn't we, didn't we talk about this? Like, that, that, that there's some. You know.
Ties back the comments to.
But to, to James's point, the alternative, you, you know, the alternative of, of having a, a mobilized group sort of come in and, and. Again, continue to sort of monopolize a conversation. I, I, I don't, I mean, we, we just have to be, you know, I guess mindful of that. I, I don't know that there's anything that's going to prevent that in any sort of circumstance.
That's very.
I mean, it kind of corrupts the experiment, right? That's the problem with it.
One of the things.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
One, one of the things that I'm sure that the. Program. Will, has to, you know, weigh into considerations. You have a thousand people on social media site commenting on something that may not even be true. So you have to weigh on the actual data, what they're commenting on, you know, what, what topic? You know, how do you present, you know, then we have to, as a township, have to use that data to make sure we get, you know, true facts or the false facts. We have to sift through this because this is a township tool. This isn't a public tool. We have to find, you know, we're gathering information, we're figuring out what, what's out there. Why are people commenting on things that may not be true? You know, and if they're partially true, you know, we have to, you know, as a board, as a staff, we'll have to figure out. Using this data, how to. You know, to use John's term, market it to, to present what, what's actual and make decisions based on. Reality, not what's perceived. I know in politics, that's sometimes can be difficult, but this is one of, this is a tool that will help the board and staff. Find clarity and moving forward for any topic.
Yeah, I guess I would just say before, I know Vice Chair Bondi wants to speak. I mean, it's not a, it's not like a, you know. Implement and forget it kind of thing, right? I mean, we have sort of a collective responsibility, right? So. You know, if there's something that's coming up that we're seeing that people continue to comment on. It, it, it may, it may not be nefarious. It may just be, we, we need to do a better job and in providing information, access to information, education, whatever it may be. And so. You know, there's no sort of silver bullet in any of this, right? It, it, it's something that does, you know, sort of going back to. You know, sort of John and Dan's comments about strategy. It all requires strategy and it all requires effort. And so it's not something that you just are going to, you know, implement. And all of a sudden, there's going to be this, this multitude of information that's going to come to you. It's going to require us to, again, market it, create awareness to it. And, and sort of respond to it. It, it, there's not going to be sort of this one silver bullet for sort of engagement. Engagement is, it, you know, is an ongoing and sort of active exercise. It's not something that you just, you know, have a tool and that, that's all you're gonna, you know. Otherwise, you're gonna just, you're gonna end up with the same information that, 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 that's out there. Which again, may not be nefarious, but may not have access to all the context or information that, that perhaps, you know, we, we would have, so.
Yeah, I mean, part, for me, part of it was, and I was really excited about finally hearing the silent majority. But the, the reason that they're the silent majority is because they, they can't be heard, right? So where they, they're not engaging to be heard for some reason. Whether it's life, everyday life is taking, you know, time that they can't put into voicing their opinion on things. So I just want to make sure that this tool doesn't turn into something where the same thousand people are kind of driving that, you know.
I think respectfully to you, to that point, there's the listening component of the Zen City tool. That is helpful to uncover stuff. And by the way, some stuff we're going to learn, like, does everybody remember the, the Lindenhurst where they put the chips and tar down, right? That was like two weeks ago and everybody's really concerned about that. Now, what did we learn from that process? Pendon didn't give us enough advanced warning about that so that we could do a better job of communicating to everybody. And we should have explained what a fog coat was and when lines would be painted because people were concerned. Okay, well, that's a listening that led to an outcome. Hey, and we do like our friends at Pendon, we just need to beat up on them on this case, right? So that's a learning. But to your point, I think this is important. We didn't aggregate our jobs when we were elected. We, we listened to people, but that's not the only arbiter. When we ask for people's opinion, we need to give them trade offs. So that, that what they give us back is if they were in the same shoes and they understood the trade offs, they might give us different recommendations. And to that end, I, I think that's where you, the survey questions in that process gets you to what I think you're looking for. Cause I think you're, and this gets to most people, I know this is horrible. They don't know they live in lower makefield township. They don't know what the Board of Supervisors does. They don't know who a board supervisor is, which by always is wonderful many times. But that being said, they don't have fully formed opinions on a lot of issues. They have general political beliefs and that informs how they might think about issues. But if they were presented with, here's an issue, here's some of the trade offs, right? If I said, okay, we're going to give institute, everybody gets five pounds of chocolate sent to them every week. People who like chocolate, be, yeah, that's wonderful. Then I said, well, okay, that's going to cost X dollars in taxes. Well, then people are like, oh no, I don't want that. It's that trade off and it's how you ask the questions and what you get from them. And you want to do that in a dispassionate way so that you're not sort of tilting the scales to a particular policy that you aim that you want.
Supervisor Bondi, you're next.
Yeah, thank you. So I think I'm, I'm probably more over with Dan, just in general, right? Like if you hear the dogs barking, my, my Berkeley engineer is just coming home, just home from her whole California graduation, everything. So, and all she has done is regale me with data and data tracking. So I'm a little bit reluctant. All that being said. I, I'm excited that we're going on this journey. I'm worried, John, you've just said some very eloquent things and Dave, you said some things, but we still don't have staff. And we don't have staff to form, meaningful questionnaires. Some of the stuff that we see on Facebook, right? It, it starts off wrong because the, the way the question is phrased, right? Why is the township doing this to our roads? You know, John, you're right, better communication, but we don't, who, who are these people? Who are these staff who's going to be aggregating, sourcing and messaging in a way? I, I do think, John, when you talk about that trade off, I, I, I like that and I don't know how to message that better, right? Like, come, call the township, ask, ask the questions. We, we long for you to be engaged and to know everything that we know. But if we're, if we're going to do this and we don't staff it and we, and we don't utilize it, I'm not so sure that next year we're going to be saying, woo, this was a win. I think we might be frustrated and people might be frustrated because, you know, we gave them this thing and, and we didn't deliver. So that, that's my, those are my concerns.
Thank you, Ms. Bondi. Alon, did you want to comment with that?
I'm sure they're very genuine and we are here to really at least. Try and give the, the opportunity to overcome and to forgive. Some proof of what is it you're doing, both of what you're saying. It's very true that most people do not always know what the Board of Supervisors, the, the council that you're doing for them. And just what we hear really give you also the voice and deliver this message back to the community about what is it you're doing with our engagement? With our opportunities to really show the, your communities, your public, your people, what is what you're doing for them, maybe for the first time in some cases. And also what you said about not giving voices, I'm enjoying what you learned working in state colleges, Stefano and Philadelphia. The fact that you don't see people coming to or meeting to your board supervisor hearing. Not that they don't have any opinion that it's merely mean that sometimes you need to ask them in a different ways and different methods, different challenges. And then to aggregate it and this where we're coming, trying to really clear the, the noise or what. Preventing you from listening to those people to your community and sharing some life and having the opportunity to. Ask them any suggestions that might help you to be once upon a time and see if something might need your attention. And what's not, what's not, maybe because it's being misdirected by a community minority. So I do think that we'll have this for you. You're not alone in this, we're just supporting you along the way all the time. And whether it's by lack of staff, so you can really be that's missing persons, others that approach you to. And move the middle where you decide that you want to.
Mr. Kratzler, in your previous municipality role, were you the main liaison with Zen City?
I mean, it was a combination of folks. I mean, it wasn't just, I, I was, you know, one of the, one of the primary liaisons. And then again, the park and recreation department was using it. The community development department was using it. So I would imagine that the uses would, you know, the users, the primary users would be generally consistent. So, you know, Jim would probably be involved in some fashion. Monica would be involved in some fashion and myself largely probably as the primary users. And then, you know, again, we have some ongoing projects where this could provide value to. I mean, there, there, you know, Dennis called in about Patterson Farm. There, you know, there's a desire to get people engaged in, in something that, you know, is a township asset, something that. It, it, you know, is going to require significant sort of capital investment, those kinds of things. And again, at the end of the day, not that $26,000 is, I, I, I don't want to sound glib. It's not, it's not an insignificant sum of money, but, but there's. There's plenty of sort of immediate uses that I think we can get some return on. And if you look at it from, you know, just a project by project basis, based on what we have going on. You know, it could be talking about, you know, a couple thousand dollars here or there for each individual project. And so to the extent that, that, again. We, we do have a responsibility. It, it's not just implementation, it's not just going to, you know, be, you know, we're going to purchase this or subscribe to this and that's going to be it. It's going to require effort on our part to Suzanne's point. But I think we have some active things that are going on that. You know, the tool can really sort of complement and, and try to help, you know, drive some of the engagement on and provide a platform for engagement. You know, beyond. You know, what we've perhaps traditionally done, so. But I, I would say to answer your question, it would probably be the three of us as the primary users.
And do you feel comfortable with that? I mean, you know.
Yeah, because we're, I mean, we're, there, there's, again, those individuals are working on projects currently that are going to require different levels of engagement. So this is just a, a tool that they now can employ as they're having discussions related to efforts that they were already going to be doing anyway. So again, on the Patterson Farm thing, the ad hoc committee is, is working on that in conjunction with Jim as sort of the primary liaison, Monica involved and so forth. So th- those are all things that are being discussed that, that we can almost immediately sort of implement this tool as, as one of the mechanisms in which we're trying to solicit feedback from folks. Cause there's, again, that, that's, that's a great asset. It's the, you know, township made a, a great investment in that in, in terms of the initial acquisition. But there's, there's more to be done there if we're going to, you know, see that through.
I'm going to end discussion for now and open this up to public comment. So is there anybody in the room or online that wish to comment on this subject? You're, you're going to have at least two in the room, one's at the mic right now. Okay. Okay.
Maybe more.
Hi, I'm Lori Gray. I am a Lower Makefield Township resident and. Lot of information, really great information. Thank you so much for all that you're doing. I may have missed this and all the conversation, but how do we ensure it's only Lower Makefield Township residents? That are using it? When you talk about surveys that have been done in the past and perhaps some skewing of data. I heard, you know, privacy is important, so you don't have to have any information. So how, did I miss that? Like, how do we, how are we insured? If this tool is to be used in the mechanism by which it's intended. How then do we have the confidence? In the tool? I did I, I don't know if I missed that.
You didn't miss it. It's a good point.
It's a great point. Alon, I I don't know if you have any uh, response to to that, just in terms of. Sort of the geographic area in which data is coming from.
We haven't missed it. We've been paying uh, great attention to this. There's something that we think. Uh, our focus on to really ensure that the or to optimize. The way that the people of Lower Makefield Township are the ones that participate in the data that we aggregate. So we are working on um. What we call like a multifaceted approach. The first one is that we've got people geofencing. We target the people that are on. Um, the areas that we are focusing on this, but we call geofencing. We are targeting people on the area. Uh, or the limits of the township. And this is where we are expecting to consolidate the data from and also to ask questions. This is the first. And we're the starting position of it. The second phase of it is that we are asking practically questions. About, for example, what is the zip code and and of your, where do you live? When we ask questions practically. And also, for example, where um, what neighborhood you are with that, where where do you live in a general. And the third of it is that we are integrating all of this data into what we already. Uh, know and file up the number and and ask. And the question, the ask and and deliver. Uh, the reports according to the different areas where are you located in. We we learn to expect different. And. Different aspects of living in the township. And according to that, we'd get a different result in different of your lives in the city and. And the level of structure in different districts and different neighborhoods in the township. And so when it comes to aggregate your data in a. In a passive way with the organic aspects of it. So we are using geofencing and the. The the background on the Florida account. And when it comes to asking practical questions, we are, we want to know uh. General uh, aspects of. Living in the township like zip codes or like, how do you make sure that. Uh, the data is regulated from the residents of the township.
I appreciate that, but I'm I'm not sure I have the confidence that that really. Is gonna resolve our issue, but that I just wanted to make note that that is a concern that I have. Thank you.
We experience, and there is no hundred percent likelihood to only be compiled of uh, percentage of the council, but we do. Uh, ask very thoroughly to make sure that the geofencing is accurate as far as we know, like based on G I S location. And also that the question that the answers that are being submitted are by the residents only, both by. The targeted that compared to update uh, the surveys and by the question that are being asked from submitted by people from the township. Thank you.
I think you still have two more, two more in the room that want to make comments, I think, at least two. So.
Okay.
Good evening. My name is Bill Gabota. I live at twelve thirty Ash Lane in the township. I have a comment and a question. Uh, the comment is, looks like this is powerful software. It looks like it's been well conceived. It also looks like you could end up drowning in all the data. It's gonna be like drinking from a fire hose. I'm sure there's ways of managing it, but be very careful. Uh, the question is, when will the general population of Lower Makefield be informed that this is happening? And to what level of detail will they be informed? Thank you.
Well, if I can answer that. We're gonna take a vote whether to accept Zen City. Tonight, um, after public comment and any additional. Uh, questions or comments from the board. So the township will be informed that we will be entering into an agreement with Zen City in the next hopefully fifteen minutes. You're, you know, as far as township, uh. Now, you know, I'm gonna need help here. At township, um. Participation, I, for lack of a better word, I'll say participation. You know, will be any survey that the township gives will be generated through Zen City uh. Platform. Uh, to the website, uh, to um. Email blast and, you know, whatever else we we have at our. Uh, hand to to reach out to the public electronically. Uh, and that'll probably have some kind of Zen City trademark on it, but I can't be sure. I'm I'm just. I'm just making some assumptions now based on. What may happen. Uh, but you know, but after tonight. You, the township will be informed.
Yeah, and I I think we could, you know, from a general sort of sharing of of information standpoint, I mean, just. We can almost employ a strategy very similar to what we're doing with Open Gov, right? To to a certain extent, which is using our social media channels. To just create an awareness as to the availability of the tool. Um, obviously, if there's a specific. You know, survey, something about nature, um. You know, we can, that that'll be communicated as as the chair just, you know, indicated. Um, but but we could also. Again, just. You you know, do some general messaging on, you know, the importance of engagement and and the desire to have folks engaged and. You know, township is looking at tools to enhance engagement and this is just one of those tools.
Right, if I could ask a question. Is there, do we have the ability to, you know, this? The sort of when. Uh, when you, when you were mentioning um, the the different functions, right? There's the. Active survey function where they develop survey questions, send it out to the population, get answers, you aggregate, kind of like what we're gonna be talking. Might be talking about a little bit later tonight with Macclesfield, right? There's there's surveys going on that are actively taking place. That that has its very specific benefit. You can create a scientific survey. You know, that's, it's a great thing. Right? And there's different ways to do that, but that creating a good survey. Is is beneficial across the board. That's that's a big driver for all this. Is there the ability to? Use that function? But turn off. The machine learning, social monitoring, et cetera, et cetera function where essentially if you're answering a survey, you're opting in. By answering the questions and you know what it's gonna be used for. If you're just going about your daily life and. Reading, putting a silly comment or whatever it is on on social media, which. Despite how that we know it's in the public domain, sort of, it's, there's still some idea of that there's privacy there, right? I think we all. Feel, especially if it's a private group. Um, is there a way to? Whether it's opting in versus opting out, or is it, can we only use the survey function and not do that other function? Is that?
It's two separate dashboards, two separate tools. Um, so they are separate. They're not intermingled. But I think you would feel more comfortable. Maybe going through a presentation, especially about that. Uh, social listening aspect of it. We're getting a lot of interference interference here and um, again, we've had many discussions. We've. We've seen the uh, you know, presentations and so forth. To the point where we feel comfortable recommending it. So um. I think that.
I think that makes sense. I mean, if the board is inclined to to do, um. I mean, is it, Alon can take you through sort of the backend stuff, the dashboard, those kinds of things. If that's the level of detail that 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 you feel is uh. Necessary and sort of desirable in order to to feel comfortable with these issues.
I I don't know that the majority of the board feels the same way I do, and that's fine. Um, and and I won't argue with them about that. It's just. Regardless, I think the survey function has net positive. I I don't, I don't know that I would ever feel the same way about the other function. Because there's. Too many cases, not 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 accusing them of anything by any means, but there's too many cases around the world of different companies. With, you know. Not using data correctly and causing issues. And I don't know that we need to do that in a community of our size. To put the the geo fence around and figure out that's basically tracking where everybody is and focusing on their information. I don't know that we need to do that as a community.
Well, they're using geofencing to serve an ad, say, that connects to the survey. They're not. You know. I don't think.
No, no, that's not what I'm saying. But I I just. There's something about that that I just, it it doesn't sit well with me for for what we need it for. That's all.
Okay, thank you, Dan. Uh, is there any other public comment?
There's uh, one more.
Aaron Schaefer, uh, Lower Makefield Township. Um, I want to thank Jill and the group and. The supervisors for um. This long discussion on this topic. I think it's really important. Um, as one of the other admins, one of. Three more vocal. Maybe a few more that aren't as vocal of the L M T is a great fake to live page. I have a lot of concerns. I think Zen City is a great tool. Um, I have a question specifically for Mr. Kratzer and. First, I'll explain that our group is a private group. It's closed. Um, take that for what you will. We have rules when people join, they answer questions. Agreeing, you know, what is in the group should stay in the group. And not to bring things from other private groups into our group. And for the most part, it works. I just want to know, like, how important is the role of? Having social media pages agree to be a part of Zen City in your vision for Zen City? Uh, because, you know, we um. Because we have several admins and we have twelve thousand members on the page. I feel a responsibility to them to not make the decision for them. I may say, I think it's great that Zen City is on our social media page. But I'm one person and I'm not, um. I don't want to feel responsible for putting that on the other eleven thousand nine hundred and ninety nine um, members. So my suggestion would be for our page and, you know, Jill and I discussed this and, you know, we agreed that we would discuss it with the other admins as well. Would be to put it. At a, as a poll on the page. And if members don't want Zen City to be. Eavesdropping, then. We would like to respect that. At least I would, you know, Jill and I will talk more about it.
Yeah, and we we had, I mean, we had a fair amount of this discussion, I I think, um. Again, what you're doing, I think, is great, right? I think I think that the private Facebook group is is great, but it it's it's only a single source. And so I I don't think any of this is driven by. From my perspective, access to that one singular group. Um. So I'm not, I mean, from my perspective, again, is it from a recommendation standpoint, whether we have access to that group or not, is not. Fundamental to sort of the recommendation and the value that I think a tool like this could could bring.
Jill had made a comment earlier when she said. You know, what if? You can't have access and you said, you think that's really a thing?
Oh, well, I, well, because it's a closed group, you would assume that. Um, a tool like Zen City wouldn't be able to access it. What I was saying was, it, you would think that they wouldn't, but what?
Correct.
But there is a way that they they can.
Right, and I would, yeah, and my hope would be that.
With our permission, with our permission.
With our permission, right. And that would be my hope and is that it would never happen without the permission of the page members, not just us, but our page members.
I mean, it couldn't.
But I think it's a great tool. I just have fears. You know, with our. You know, page members. Not really trusting.
And and for the record, I prefer we don't have access. I I think that it's.
But.
It's complicated.
I mean, yeah, no, I I would agree. I mean, on many of the township related issues, it is the same ten people commenting on out of the, out of the groups.
I would disagree with that. I think that it's a whole, we need to have more discussion about the positives and the negatives of it. Uh, you know, have a meeting or working meeting or something like that, but I, you know.
Fair enough.
It does not appear to be any more public comment in the uh, room.
Thanks. Any online?
There's no public comment online.
Okay. Any further questions? Any final comments by the? Board members? Every now and then I'll call the question. All those in favor of the. Approving the. Recommendations of E Mac with the financial parameters stated, signify by saying aye and raise your hand. Aye. Both know?
Both.
Eyes have a four one. Thank you, Alon, and thank you, members of the E Mac. And with that, we will go to item ten, engineers report, Mr. Pockle.
Yes, hello supervisors. The agenda item. First agenda item is to consider change order number one. For the pool painting project to American Pool. Of Pennsylvania LLC is a credit to the township in the amount of one thousand four hundred and fifty six dollars. This is a balancing of quantities. Uh, the quantities used out in the field were less than the quantities bid. Therefore. It's a credit to the township.
So moved.
Of one thousand four hundred and fifty.
Second.
Multiple motions made, multiple seconds made. We'll skip the comments, go to public comment, any public comment? Hearing that, I'll call the question. All those in favor of the motion. Eyes have a five zero. Go ahead, Mr. Pockle.
Similarly, consider pay application number one, which is the final pay application for the pool painting. Project to American Pool, Pennsylvania LLC in the amount of one, one hundred and forty four thousand, four hundred and sixty six dollars and seventy cents.
It moved. Second.
Second.
Motion made by Supervisor Granier, seconded by Supervisor Blondie. To approve a pay application number one, final. Any comment? Public comment? Hearing that, I'll call the question. All those in favor, signify by saying aye, raise your hand. Eyes have a five zero.
Uh, next item is general project updates you have within your packet, my uh, engineers report, um. I, given the full agenda, I I'm I'm happy to address any questions that you might have.
I just have one.
Sure.
How's the Woodside Bike Path coming?
Uh, the Woodside Road Bike Path is. Um. It ne- it needs some work. There, we we were out there yesterday, uh, kind of looking at some items that the contractor needs to address. Uh, and I am engaging with the contractor to make sure that that happens. And. Yeah, so there there's still some work to be done. I would caution the the public that I know it 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 looks like a a completed trail. Um, but it is still a a a project that's under construction and so. Um, take caution, uh, if you choose to use it.
Thank you. Has it been? Publicly like, uh?
No, no, it's not publicly open.
Okay, so is there? Do not. Uh, attempt to use this path.
There, there are no, there are not signs uh, to that. Nature. We we're going to engage with the contractor to make sure that they have signage out there that.
I would say that's probably a high priority considering it is dangerous, obviously. Yeah, okay. Thanks.
Good comments. Thank you, Mr. Pockle. Item eleven, Parks and Rec. Mr. Tierney?
As Monica is coming up, uh, I'll I'll just address item eleven A. Um, uh, there is a a resolution before the board. Uh, resolution twenty three dash twelve. Uh, recognizing uh, Friday, uh, July the twenty first, twenty twenty three as. Uh, Pennsylvania Parks and Recreation's uh, Recreation Professionals. Professionals Day in uh, in Lower Makefield Township. Um, we would recommend uh, the uh. Uh, consideration of this um. This resolution and recognition of the great work that uh, that our um, park and rec professionals do uh, on uh, on on behalf of uh, of the township and the citizens of the township.
Still moved?
Second.
Motion made by Supervisor Granier, seconded by Supervisor Blondie to approve recognizing. May, uh, Friday, July twenty first, twenty twenty three, is Pennsylvania Parks and Recreation Professional Day in Lower Makefield Township. Any comments?
A quick Google search also, uh, that day is National Junk Food Day.
Perfect.
It's perfect.
Maybe that's how we'll celebrate.
That's how you celebrate.
Right.
Perfect. Thank you.
We'll do a five K with a Snickers bar.
Perfect.
Any public comment? Hearing none of. Hearing none, I'll call the question, all those in favor of resolution 23 dash 12, signify by saying aye, raise your hand.
Aye.
Eyes have a five zero. Okay, number a lot of.
Thank you for that. And as a follow up, I just wanted to let the board know that we've been selected by Pennsylvania Park and Rec Society as a highlight community. Um, specifically for that day. So it's really great that you were able today to vote on that day. Um, as as we recognize in Lower Mayfield Township. So thank you very much. I appreciate that. Um, so the next item on the agenda is a project or program updates or project updates. I'm focusing today, we have so many things going on right now in the parks that I could be here all day. So to keep it simple, I'm focusing on art in the parks, which is um, our brand new program that we're bringing by grant and with the support of Artists of Yardley to the parks. Um, we've seen word Johnson sculptures that were just uh, installed at Memorial Park and Patterson Farm. So we have four sculptures at Memorial Park. Yes, these sculptures are free to view and you can enjoy them while you're at the park. We focused on play, play for all specifically as our new vision statement as the theme. So you'll notice a theme of play. Um, depending upon where the locations are, we tried to put um, the sculptures in places where you could maybe join in with what person in the sculpture is doing. So someone that was actually out at Memorial Park flying a kite next to the kite sculpture today, which was really great. Um, we have a tennis sculpture right next to tennis and pickleball courts. Um, you'll see that we tried to, um, create opportunities for you engage in different type of play. Uh, we plan to partner with the library for the mother reading a book to a child. Um, so we have a bunch of different things we've planned throughout the parks throughout the summer. So you'll see those um, pop. Some of them will be pop up and some of them will be a little bit more planned, but keep an eye on our website as that goes. We have three more sculptures that will be installed tomorrow. Um, one at Kids Kingdom right outside of Kids Kingdom, one in front of the community center, not directly, but along the new bike path. And one in Veterans Square. So we will continue to, um, update the community as those are installed. Um, and if you get the opportunity to drive by, um, in the probably likely in the morning, um, it's a really cool process, uh, to watch them come in. Um, so with that, we have our website that we developed, um, in partnership with our, uh, Dan McLoane, our township planner. He created an interactive map that shows where each sculpture is located. And if you click on the location, you get a description and a picture of what sculpture is in sight. Which is really cool new feature that we can do, um, with some GIS mapping, um, that we have now at the township, which is very exciting and our programs. And you'll notice that um, some of them have dates beside of them. Some of them are still formulating and trickling in as we go. Um, we're really trying to load. We have some pay for programming. We have some special events. Our first real special event is on June 10th at Memorial Park, which will be an arts and crafts, um, uh, vendors and some food and some entertainment. So it's a really cool event there. Um, you'll also see more filling in, um, the schedule as we go. There's already all of our classes are up and we'll do Sunday tours, um, with artists of Yardley also will be providing those. So take a look at our website, check out the interactive map. I'm going to interact with the sculptures and, you know, if you have haven't have a hula hoop with you at Kids Kingdom, go ahead and hula hoop. Um, do you know 200 hula hoopers at one time is the world record? So maybe we can try and set a world record. I don't know, maybe. Uh, just a thought. So, um, all different kinds of possibilities. So, um, that that's art in the park. Does anybody have any question?
No, all right.
So moving on, Macklesfield Park. Today I'm here purely just to update about the process. We're not making any decisions. I'm not proposing anything. To be honest, I'm not even going to bring any themes or discussions to the to this, uh, field today. Um, really strictly just trying to update the community about where we are. Um, first, all of the information is on our website under the planning link and Parks and Recreation. You can also get through the, um, community development website. So we cross linked it on the website. Um, we have everything on the website, all of our meeting minutes, everything that's happened along the way. Some of the things that most recently occurred, um, we had a youth focus group. We had a senior focus group. We also had a neighbors focus group, and we've also had a number of neighbors who provided us feedback through email. And so we're including that as part of our, you know, uh, when I say where I mean primarily J M T. The contractor who is, um, providing the service for us is using that as data points to kind of formulate a plan. Um, in the last month, there have been a number of key person interviews. I believe there are a few outstanding key person interviews. And then we plan to meet as a steering committee at the end of the month um, to kind of regroup. After that meeting, we'll plan a, a kind of like a community forum, open house, similar to what you're seeing for Patterson Farm. Uh, where people will be able to interact with any kind of, uh, potential proposals, be able to give feedback before we bring that to the board. Um, the boards, park board and board of supervisors. So we have, we're we're kind of coming to a good space right now. We've made a lot of progress and a lot of great, great information and themes. So I'm really excited, um, you know, for everybody to get to hear how that's going and pay attention to that website. We're really keeping everything right on there. So it's all right there for you to access. Um, and if anybody has any questions about that process, or I'd be glad to answer those today.
I guess everybody's satisfied, Monica. Thank you.
So I guess the big picture, you know, one of the things that we do as a board that we that we did a couple of years back after many years of it sitting in limbo a little bit was we updated the the overall community master plan, comprehensive master plan. Some of these items are, you know, master plan is pretty high level, you know, 30,000 foot a little bit. Um, but considers things like recreation, obviously, and open space, et cetera, et cetera. Um, is there any, I know you've formed, you've had some groups form up and and dense focus groups and met with 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 key folks around. Has the, anyone from the planning commission been involved at all?
At this point, no. Um, if you'd like to see them involved in a different way, we'd be glad to. If you want this to go for the, like, we can discuss how that would work.
Uh, they just offers, because they're so involved in community planning, they 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 have a good way of looking at things, I think, and can offer some good feedback. Uh, it's a little different from the normal groups, but I think that that particular group could offers, could offer some interesting.
Sure.
Insight that that's not because it's nothing like that's happening. It's just a a group that we have in the township that's very involved in that, so.
I can bring that to G J M T and see how, you know, they do this all the time.
Yeah, on their.
And they probably have some ideas.
They know a lot of planning.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, um, I'm sure they'd be glad. Um, we definitely incorporate our master plan and park and rec plan as part of the discussion, you know, we don't want to go outside of what the long range goals are. And I'm sure some of Bucks County planning, um, long range, but we could definitely discuss how that would happen. I can't give you an answer on that right now.
And it was, I wasn't expecting one.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Good point.
Thank you, Monica. Thanks, Dan, for the comment.
And that's all I have today.
Thank you, Monica. Uh, we'll go to item 12, manager report.
Uh, thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Um, James, do you want to go back to the treasurer's report? Just that 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 item?
You want to go over? You want me to go over it?
Want to go over it.
Okay. So Chair, I think I missed, um, item 6A, which was the treasurer's report for April of 2023. I don't know if the supervisors have that in front of them. Should be a single page. It's also on the, uh, on the site. So basically, 2023 month to date, um, our revenues were 8,227 dollars, 227,250 dollars and 33 cents. Um, our expenses were 1.656060. And 2023 year to date, um, our revenues were 15.179,44882 with expenses of 7.302322. So if anybody has any questions about the expenses, month to date and year to date. Hopefully Dave will be able to answer. And you do need to sign as well, right?
Yeah.
Last one, just for the heck of it. How does this, and this is for Mr. Kratzer, I believe. Relative to the 2023 budget, how are we looking year to date revenues versus expenses?
Yeah, things are are generally in order. I I did intend to sort of do a sort of a mid-year, um, report, uh, as we're, you know, approaching sort of the end of the first half of the year. So I'll have more information on that, but but just gen- generally speaking, things are are consistent.
And I guess in line with the ratios from last year?
Yeah, I mean, from a cash flow standpoint, everything is again, consistent with what you would what would expect. I mean, obviously, as James reported, there's, uh, you know, there's, uh, property tax, real estate revenue coming in. So that that's why you're seeing the the influx from a cash flow perspective. You're seeing a lot of the money being, uh, collected at at this point and obviously not, uh, the same degree of corresponding expense, but, um, but yeah, a- again, things are are consistent, but we'll we'll give you a more sort of deep dive on, uh, on that, um, as we as we approach the end of the first, uh, half of the year of 2023.
Sounds good.
So then, um, Chair, would you like me to just continue on the items?
Yes, please.
Okay, all right. So the first item, uh, for your consideration, um, this is a follow up to an action that was taken at your, uh, March 15th, uh, 2023 meeting in which you authorized, uh, the purchase uh, of, uh, a 2024 Kenworth model, uh, four by two dump truck with plow and salt spreader. And at the same meeting, uh, authorized, uh, uh, us to solicit, uh, financing proposals uh, to, uh, finance, um, that purchase. Um, in your packet was, uh, a summary of, uh, the responses that we got. Um, we had, uh, let's see, one, two, three, I think four banks, um, respond, um, one not responding to no, I'm sorry, we had, yes, four banks respond to, uh, to the solicitation. Um, consistent with what was contemplated in the adopted 2023 budget. Um, we're recommending, uh, the, um, proposal from Santander Bank uh, for a five year term, uh, at a rate at, uh, 4.48%. Uh, again, the total cost of of this vehicle, uh, is 235,306 dollars and and 95 cents. Um, again, that term, uh, is, uh, consistent with, um, what was contemplated by the board in the adoption of the 2023 um, budget and and the rate is, um, uh, again, generally consistent with the rate assumptions also that were incorporated into that document. So we would recommend acceptance of the financing proposal from Santander Bank, again, for a five year term uh, at an interest rate of 4.48% uh, for uh, the 235,30695 that, uh, uh, is the cost of the vehicle that was authorized for purchase.
Your motion?
So moved?
Second.
Second.
Motion made by Supervisor, the partner, seconded by Supervisor Lewis to accept the financing proposal from Santander Bank, uh. Any comments from the board? Any public comment?
Uh, sorry, Fred. Do you, you know how many, I'll say pieces of large equipment or vehicles that we've, uh, just this year?
Um, so at that meeting, there were, uh, there were two that were contemplated. One was a six wheel dump truck. The other was a, um, uh, uh, the 10 wheel, uh, dump truck. Um, so two two within sort of the public works department. And then, um, I, there there was also, um, wasn't there a piece also in the, it was a two, two? The two mowers in in the, uh, and yeah, a- again, the the mowers, um, were discussed within the 2023 budget. I I don't know that they made it into the 2023 budget. I think it was an oversight, but again, we discussed that. These were contemplated purchases, um, uh, from from the public works, uh, department.
You know how many more of these we're looking at this year?
I know there is another, um, like pickup truck, uh, that is, um, uh, in sort of the plan for 2023 from a replacement standpoint. Um, and then that that would be the it, that would be it in terms of vehicles.
Uh, we we built, we built out another pickup truck too for, not a pickup, but an S U.
Uh, that, yeah, and so the other two that, um, there was the vehicle for the fire services director, again, which is, which is, was a budgeted purchase. And then, um, there was the purchase of the vehicle for the code enforcement officer. That vehicle was involved in an accident. So the majority of that was funded through through insurance proceeds. Uh, so that was an unexpected purchase.
Want to make sure.
Yeah, yeah.
Any other comments, Bud Board? Any public comment? Hearing none, I'll call the question, all those in favor, signify by saying aye and raise your hand. Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Eyes have a five zero. Thank you. Item B?
Okay, so item B is a consideration. We're requesting consideration to authorize, uh, uh, the advertisement of an ordinance to, uh, enter into, uh, uh, an intergovernmental cooperation agreement for purposes of joining uh, the Pennsylvania Municipal Health Insurance Cooperative, uh, and to, uh, participate as a member of PIMIC. So, um, PIMIC is, uh, the largest, um, municipal health insurance cooperative in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. Uh, there's about 275 local governments, um, that procure their health insurance coverage uh, through PIMIC. Um, PIMIC is very similar to how you procure coverage through divot. So for example, on the workers comp side and on the property and liability insurance side. Um, it's a self insured cooperative, so it's not a fully insured product. It's self insured. Um, and, um, uh, as part of the health insurance renewal, our our plan year currently is on a July 1 uh, renewal, uh, C C biz, who's the broker here, um, solicited proposals both from the fully insured market and the, uh, self insured market. Uh, the PIMIC proposal, um, is the, um, uh, best, uh, proposal from a cost perspective uh, is what, not only in the short term, but also generally, uh, self insured environments provide more stability, uh, from a rate increase perspective year over year. Um, if you were to evaluate that, um, and so in order to join PIMIC, uh, it requires us to adopt an ordinance, uh, under the Intergovernmental Cooperation Act, uh, because it is a cooperative, a governmental cooperative. And we're, uh, requesting, uh, authorization to advertise that ordinance. Um, this change, uh, just to give you a little bit more color on it, uh, will result in a fairly significant savings, uh, upwards of, uh, 458,000 dollars of savings is expected as a result of this transition um, when compared to, um, uh, to our current cost. Uh, and, uh, again, as I said, just, you know, based on experience, these environments, um, uh, provide, you know, opportunities for sort of stabilized costs, but also, um, uh, you you get surplus distributions every year as as the, uh, as the plan year concludes, so. Um, a good tool for us to, uh, procure insurance. And they also are providing us with an 18 month proposal, so our our rate will be fixed for 18 months. Um, and and that will allow us to transition, uh, to a one one renewal moving forward, um, which will be beneficial from a budgetary, a budgeting standpoint as well. Um, as you know, right now, you're you're essentially budgeting for known cost for the first six months. And then at that point, you're trying to predict what your increase will be. Um, you'll now have this information in the fall to be able to incorporate it into your adopted budget so that there's certainty from a budget standpoint. So, um, that was, um, another goal of sort of this transition. And then finally, there's some, um, just administrative, uh, benefit to, um, uh, to the employee members as 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 well, just, um, eliminating some of the process requirements that currently exist under the current, uh, plan setup. So, um, overall, good, um, good situation for the township from a financial standpoint, uh, from a budgetary planning perspective, and then, uh, also from a user perspective. So again, the first action is to to authorize the advertisement of this ordinance that would be necessary for us to to join the cooperative.
So moved?
Second.
Motion made by Supervisor Granier, seconded by Supervisor Lewis to, excuse me, to advertise the ordinance to enter into the intergovernmental intergovernmental agreement for the purpose of joining in that Pennsylvania Municipal Health Insurance Cooperative, PIMIC. Any comments by the board?
I know that there are no negatives here and that we're going to save a lot of money.
Well, you know, and that's, that's, that's very true. I mean, for those who who wonder why we sometimes uh, concentrate on revenues. Uh, this is, this is to show, you know, that we're also considering how we can save money uh, in our budget as well. I mean, we, you know, we've been hammered that we we have a deficit. This will go a long way and and removing that uh, deficit significantly. And I, as I understand, it's duplicate service to what we have now for our employees and our.
Yeah, there's no, there's no, the savings isn't being generated by plan design changes, nothing of that nature. I mean, obviously, we have contractual obligations as it relates to, you know, benefits that are provided to a majority of our employees. And so we have an obligation to honor those. And so that's, that's doing that, but 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 again, providing what I would argue is probably the most efficient way to to obtain coverage and doing it in a way that's cooperative with other fellow local governments.
Any other comments, questions by the board? Any public comment? Hearing now, I'll call a question. All those in favor of advertising this ordinance, signify by saying aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Eyes have a five zero. Item C?
So the next item is related to arbitrage rebate compliance services related to the tax-exempt debt issue that the township issued in November of 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 twenty sixteen. You are required, just again, to provide, not to get into weeds, but essentially, you can't, you can't borrow tax-exempt funds and generate interest return in excess of what the interest you're paying on those tax-exempt debt or there's tax-exempt proceeds is. And so to the extent that you have positive arbitrage, you're you're required by the IRS to report that and ultimately remit that to to the IRS. So you're required to do a calculation at a minimum once every five years. So again, this closed in twenty sixteen, so technically you should have done an arbitrage rebate calculation in twenty twenty-one. That calculation was 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 not done, so we we have, we have to proceed with this from from a compliance perspective. We solicited two proposals on, from from two firms, two qualified firms. One was from PFM, the other was from from AMTEC. The PFM proposal to get us current is priced at, there's a fee schedule attached to both of the proposals, but the the effect of the fee schedule is it would be forty-five hundred dollars for PFM to do the work. The AMTEC proposal to get us current was initially going to be seventy-two hundred dollars. I, you know, pushed to to try to get them to reduce that, they reduced that down to six thousand dollars. So the PFM proposal is at forty-five hundreds, recognizing that cost differential, the nature of the work and sort of the capacity to do the work. We would recommend the engagement of PFM for purposes of this this work.
Right here motion?
I'd like to make a motion to engage AMTEC for this second.
Motion made to engage AMTEC by Supervisor Granier, seconded by Supervisor Lewis. Any comment?
Just a quick question for. So essentially, this should have been done in twenty-one.
Right.
So you're seeing it now, two years later, plus or minus a few months. Whenever I see IRS and time passing, passing compliance dates, that to me sounds like penalties or interest or something. Do we know what what one? Who would typically be responsible for following this to make sure that we are in compliance? And then two, now that we're, I'm using the word compliance because that's how I talk. But now that, now that we're aware of this and we're going to be engaging somebody, you have the IRS. Are we, do you have any feeling for the likelihood of penalties, fees, et cetera, associated with it?
Yeah, yeah, I don't think there, I mean, the, the, if you were subject to an audit, you would have, you would have had to produce this, this report. You were not subject to an IRS audit on 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 this issue. And so it's, it's not something that now we're going to report and we're going to get subject, you know, we're, we're gonna, we're gonna have fines and interest and sort of penalties of of, it's, it's not like sort of a tax filing, it's more of something that's required to be done and and on hand in the event that there is an audit that that the IRS would do on on these tax-exempt proceeds, as I understand it. And so whether there's anything due to the IRS, the the reality is during the majority of that period, there probably was negative arbitrage, meaning that you were borrowing at a rate that was higher than the rate of interest that you were earning. Now, obviously, we were, we we flipped that where we're actually earning interest on it, but you have the ability to take credit for those periods of negative arbitrage. So I don't know that we are in positive arbitrage space, but we do need to be, we need to have the calculation done, and then we also need to be mindful that we do have yield restriction on our interest-earning potentials on this, on this tax-exempt debt. And so I don't think we're going to be, again, subject to sort of penalties, fines, those kinds of things as 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 we were delinquent from a filing perspective. You know, in terms of your question of of who, again, you know, typically, you know, that that may be a combination of people, you know, township manager, you know, finance director, financial advisor, all of those players would would typically have some involvement in 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 doing this. We, when we talked about when we, when you passed a resolution to join Pliggett, one of the things I said was that, to the extent, and we do have remaining proceeds in that issue, we have about four point three million dollars of remaining proceeds. If you do transfer that money to Pliggett, then they'll do this as a normal course. They're used to custoding tax-exempt bond proceeds, and so they'll do it as a value add. And so we won't have to worry about this moving, moving, moving forward. But yeah, it generally would have been a combination of folks that potentially would have been involved in making sure that this is, this is done.
Any other comments or questions? Any public comment? I'll call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion?
Aye.
All opposed? No?
Aye.
No? Motion passes three, two.
Okay, thank you.
Item D?
So Andy, I don't know if you want to, I know this is under B. I can sort of provide just sort of a general summary of the the resolution. So we have two resolutions related to funding applications that we're looking at submitting that are actually due today that for two projects that were identified in the, in our pollution or approved pollution reduction plan that was again submitted to the Department of Environmental Protection. So there are two resolutions, again, authorizing the submission of of those applications. The one application is for Five Mile Woods, and the total project cost of that is two hundred and thirty thousand, six thirty. We are submitting a two hundred thousand dollar grant request in that case. So we would have a local match, the required match is is fifteen percent. But we're also subject to that maximum grant amount, so that, our contribution to that, if we were awarded, would be thirty thousand, six thirty. And then the second is for the Stream Bank Restoration Project at Charles Bain Middle School. Again, that's a larger project, that total project cost is estimated at five thirteen, six thirty. The maximum grant available through DCD in this is three hundred thousand, so our match would be two thirteen, six thirty. I don't know, Andy, if you want to provide any additional context on these projects. Again, these were projects that were already contemplated as part of the PRP. We talked about this before when we were talking about these proposals. They're not elective projects, they're required projects. You have a regulatory obligation to implement these projects as part of your, 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 your permit to discharge stormwater. So again, Andy, if you want to provide some additional information, then.
I mean, I think you summed it up fairly well. The only thing that I would add is that we did get permission from the school district for the project on Charles Bain Middle School property to complete the project on on property. We did confirm with DCD that we are allowed to submit both the resolution and the funding commitment letter tomorrow, even though the the application deadline is is today. It's an online application and we can submit that tonight if we get things in by, within the next two hours, so. But yeah, so Charles Bain Middle School is a Stream Bank Restoration Project on the property, and then the Five Mile Woods would be a porous paving system for the parking lot in the driveway at Five Mile Woods.
Described in detail a few meetings ago, right?
Yes.
Individual motions?
Yeah, all right. I'm sorry, I blended those together, but just.
No, I mean, for the, for the minutes, no, I think the explanation should be together, but as far as the motion, it should be separate.
Be quick so we can do it before midnight. Like to make a motion to approve Resolution twenty-three dash thirteen, authorizing the submission of a grant application for PRP projects at Charles Bain Middle School.
Second?
Thank you.
I was giving you the.
Motion made by, I'm sorry, I didn't hear that. Seconded by Supervisor Lewis to approve Resolution twenty-three dash thirteen. Any more comments? Public comment?
Nothing in the room.
Yeah, I'm gonna call the question. All those in favor, signify by saying aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
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 Five ayes, okay.
I'll do the next one really quick. Like to make a motion to approve Resolution twenty-three dash fourteen, authorizing the submission of a grant application for PRP projects at Five Mile Woods.
Second?
Motion made by Supervisor Granier, segmented by Supervisor McCartney for twenty-three fourteen. Any discussion? Any public comment?
No, the room.
Hearing now, I'll call a question. All those in favor, signify by saying aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye. Eyes have a five zero. And MF?
Be premature.
And the final item I have for the board is requesting authorization, execute required documents associated with the Secudas settlement. Just again, some just basic background, this this related to a project dating back to, I think it was two thousand thirteen, where the township had obtained a grant from the Pennsylvania Department of Emergency Management to raise the house located at fourteen fifty-one River Road, which was, I guess, damaged to to, due to flooding or subject to damage due to flooding. Township had received that grant, entered into an agreement with Secudas, had contract dispute at that point with Secudas relating to performance of work, and then ultimately engaged a different contractor to complete that work. The matter became a subject of of litigation. Parties have been working to try to reach settlements on on this, and the parties have reached settlements where the township will be receiving payments, both direct payment and and sort of relief from some retainage in the amount of ninety thousand dollars collectively. So we would recommend, and your counsel on this matter is recommending execution of these documents to to end the matter.
So moved.
Motion made by Supervisor McCartney, segmented by Supervisor Lewis for the, to approve the settlement documents. Any further discussion? Any public comment?
No.
Hearing now, I'll call a question. All those in favor, signify by saying aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Eyes have a five zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Item thirteen, solicitors' report.
Yes, first, let me report on the executive session. Executive session started at six thirty this evening. All board members were present for all or part of the meeting, along with the chief, Mr. Kratschler, myself. Items related to real estate litigation contracts and informational items were discussed. The executive session, which concluded just before this meeting started. In my, the only item under my report specifically is consider authorization to re-advertise the ordinance amending the zoning ordinance to provide for open space requirements. I don't want to belabor this, I'm sure most people are aware what this is about, but I want to at least have some information in the minutes for this. This started back in, I believe, September, as far as advertising this ordinance, which some has referred to as the open space ordinance, some as the cluster ordinance. In any event, it is now before you to consider for advertising, and the the issue here is whether you want to have presented in its latest version, which does have a an option where the density does not, with the cluster option will not, does not exceed the density without the cluster. I want to make sure that's something that both the Planning Commission, I believe even, I think EAC was concerned about. That's the latest iteration, I believe, Jim, that we have. I don't know if there's any consideration to any other further review from local boards. If not, if there's no substantive changes, it would be appropriate to authorize for advertisement. If there are, then it would be not be appropriate to advertise tonight if there's other changes that would be considered before it should be finalized. So.
I'm moving.
We have a second?
Second?
Motion made by Supervisor Blondie, segmented by Supervisor McCartney to re-advertise the ordinance, amending the zoning ordinance to provide for open space requirements. Any discussion?
Question, Fred? And I'm not sure if this is for Dave or for you, actually, as the Planning Commission liaison. Was, did they make any other, I, let me back up. There's a lot of stuff covered in this zoning ordinance, right? Where definitions or other aspects of it really overlap with SALBO. You know, so there's, there's interplay between the two. Zoning ordinances are not SALBO, SALBO is not zoning ordinance, but they definitely go together.
They impact one another.
They impact each other, exactly. So I understand there are definition, there are not, there's language used in this ordinance where the definitions are taken from SALBO or or in SALBO, which it may be appropriate, not, not in this zoning ordinance, but to address it in SALBO if we want to. You know, there's a definition for open space, for example, that is a little quirky, that could use some, use some help. And there's probably a few other things in the SALBO where there's definition that.
Definitions, definitions in in this ordinance will be transferred to the SALBO. So the Planning Commission has approved, has recommended approval with those conditions.
Right, and I just want people to understand that because that's questions I've been getting about that, so I think that's important.
That would be a separate process to do that.
Exactly.
And 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 the community development is already working on that. And if we don't have it today, we'll have it shortly.
Understood. I guess the one question, I don't know if this question or request maybe even, is to better understand maximum possible percentages for preservation or open space on site. I know twenty-five percent is what we've been talking about. I know other townships in Pennsylvania go somewhat higher. I think numbers as high as fifty percent have been discussed. And there's some, there's been discussion about what is our, what is our legally defensible max? I, I, for lack of a better term, right? And.
You don't know until it's challenged.
Exactly, well, that's the thing, that, that is the thing.
I'm not, I'm not asking that to be invited tonight, but that's just, yeah.
Yeah, no, I I understand. So personally, I would love to see it go up a bit, from twenty-five to maybe a thirty-five, something that I think is defensible.
I I think the minimum then is twenty-five. Is Jim in the, is Jim in the room?
Yes, Jim is here and he.
Yeah, Jim can get, give an overview of what we, the Planning Commission settled on.
Is is now reluctantly approaching the the podium.
The chairs are uncomfortable, so it hurt my back.
All those long swims you get.
Uh, the ordinance starts with twenty-five percent mandated as open space. Many other municipalities have open space options in their ordinances that have a higher number, however, they are optional. I haven't seen anyone who's had an ordinance that mandates a number higher than twenty-five percent in the ordinance. There is a sliding scale that you can go and do more open space on a site. And as you do more open space, you could potentially make your lot slightly smaller. However, the net result will be that there will be no increase in the number of units that you'd get other than doing a buy right plan without any open space.
And related to those percentages, in in this version, are they allowed to sort of double dip on resource-protected lands, like say Woodlands, for example, that they couldn't build in anyway? Are they getting credit? Are they getting credit for that as open space in that twenty-five or? Percentage?
Yes.
Is there any way we could? Not do that or approach that differently so that? Um, areas that wouldn't be developed anyway. We we can actually promote more open space because those areas are often areas you can't get to anywhere. They might be wetlands. They might be something like that where you can't build in those anyway. Um, but it's also not. A type of open space that people could get to either.
Describe kind of a net open space situation, more or less, I think. What is it? Open space?
It'll, well, and I get, yeah, and that goes back to the Sal, a little bit to the Saldo definition about what open space is. I know some people. Try to think that the strip of grass next to a sidewalk might be open space when, you know. That that's a bit of a stretch in my book, but that's, that's not a zoning. That's not a zoning definition. That's a Saldo definition, but. I'm just wondering if there's any way. To. Any other ways to bump up the number a little bit based on resource protection areas so that we can give those resource protection areas their own. Their their own thing versus.
I think it could, it was addressed in 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 how we. How the ordinance defines how the open space needs to be configured. So if there's resource protected space, it still has to be contiguous with the rest of the open space.
Yeah, you couldn't have a little pocket of some resource and call that open space. There are. Some criteria currently in Saldo that. Layout. The size, the general shape, the configuration of open space that it, it has to be something that's sort of a benefit. To the community, either the community at large as they drive by. Or the community that resides within the development. That they have some kind of open space that. Makes sense for them too. And we did look into, could we? Sort of take out. The resources and then add twenty-five percent upon that. But then when you look at it, you're basically. You'd have to let them do townhouses. To do that. Otherwise, you're just confiscating their land. So it didn't quite work out unless you wanted to go. To a real cluster where you. Go from single family homes to townhouses. I don't think anyone wanted to do that.
Well, if we had a hundred acre, I I don't even know that we have this in the township, but we have a hundred acre site. With twenty-five acres of woodlands. And so that's twenty-five percent of the sun. Right, and we, they have to protect those woodlands. All twenty-five of those acres of woodlands. Would count as their open space. And then they could.
If it's in a size and shape and configuration that makes sense, yes. And our curtain ordinance has that right now. We have what they call performance zoning in that. We value protecting our natural resources, our flood plains, our wetlands, buffers from those features. Our woodlands uh. And steep slopes. And there are limits on the disturbances to those areas. And based on the limitation and keeping people away from those more sensitive areas. Uh, our current ordinance allows you to basically cluster right now. And do a higher density. So that the net effect is the same as this ordinance. Uh, for a piece of land without any resources or many resources and that. Um, at the end of the day. The developers made whole in that they can get. A comparable number of units. As if they had allotted out the entire property.
One one other question, I think. I think I saw this was added with at the plan commission, which I like the idea. Um. Of having sort of upfront requiring something along the lines of an open space management plan. Can you explain? What what that would be in this ordinance?
Yeah, uh, basically, uh, we would want to have. Something laid out of who's going to own it. Who's going to maintain it? How are they going to maintain it? Like what type of level of? Maintenance is it going to be? Is it going to be a naturalized area? Is it going to be mowed grass? Are there going to be? Playground structures in there, walking trails, you know, how's it ultimately going to be managed either by? The township dedicated. By the community if they create an HOA. Or if they grant it to a conservancy or some other. Organization that would own and maintain that land. How would they? Maintain that land?
And that, would that go into some sort of deed restriction? And that would be.
There would be, there's some document would accompany the approval for that. It might be, it may all likelihood a deed restriction with a separate agreement if it's a conservancy or something like that to confirm that.
Yeah, I think that was like Barbara Kirk added that, and I think it was a really great. Addition that. Planning commission had kind of been hinting at, and then she just sort of took the ball and said, here's how you do it. And I think everyone was pleased with that.
Good for me.
Ms. Bundy?
Yeah, the only thing I, you know, Jim, thank you for explaining that and you know, all the work that's gone into this from the various groups and the. Our various brain trust. I would just tweak the way you message it, Jim, right? We're doing this not for the developers. We're doing it for the property owners. Right, as we change our zoning, we want to make sure that we're benefiting the township. And that we're not going to be in a position where we're going to be challenged legally about. Taking and devaluing people's properties. So I think this ordinance does a really nice job and and kudos to you, Fred, for. Thinking about it and bringing it forward. Um, so that we can do what we can to make sure that we have whatever. Undeveloped land we can. Have going forward.
Thank you. And this is. This ordinance pass, you know, passes. It will significantly keep. A large portion of our. Undeveloped land. Undeveloped. Or at least developed in a way that it's for green space and not. Cement. Wood siding. Pavement. Any other? Comments or questions by the board? Any public comment?
None in the room.
Any comment online?
There's no comment online.
Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of re-advertising this ordinance, signify by saying aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
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 Eyes have a five zero. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll make sure we get that out in the next couple of days here.
Thank you.
Um, next for zoning hearing board, there are three items. I'll try to get through those summarily. First, the appeal number Z twenty-three dash two zero zero seven. Uh, Nathan Simcox Hydroscape for the property located at seventy-three Glen Drive, tax parcel two zero dash zero four zero dash zero nine five dash zero zero one. Applicant request to variant from variants from township zoning ordinance two hundred dash fourteen. In order to install an in-ground pool, concrete pool deck and patio. Which would increase the impervious surface from the existing fifteen point five percent. To eighteen point eight percent where thirteen percent is the allowable amount. Uh, it's the information we have is this is located in a flood zone. Uh, the practice of the board has been for several years. Uh, to at least participate in these circumstances, just to make sure that uh, all concerns are met with respect to the installation of flood zones. We'd recommend participation. Not opposition. Um, but uh, and that would require a vote if that's the board's inclination.
Make a motion to participate in appeal number Z dash twenty-three dash two thousand seven.
Go your second.
Second.
Motion made by Supervisor Granier, signed by Supervisor Lewis to participate in appeal Z dash twenty-three dash zero zero two zero zero seven. Any comments? Any public comment? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor, signify by saying aye and raise your hand. Aye.
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 Close note?
Aye.
Eyes have a four one.
Next, appeal Z dash twenty-three dash two thousand eight, Mark Havers appeals for the property located at eleven one one five five Big Oak Road. Tax parcel numbers two zero dash zero three four dash one three two dash zero zero one. Requesting a variance from township zoning ordinance two hundred dash thirty-one. In order to install an in-ground pool cabana with a concrete patio and a twelve by sixteen foot shed. Which would increase the impervious surface from existing twenty point nine percent to twenty-nine percent, twenty-nine point seven percent. Where twenty-one percent is the allowable amount. Uh, this is not in a flood zone, at least based upon the information we have. And consisted with the other uh. Circumstances like this, the applications we've seen in the township for the last several years. We recommend deferral as the zoning hearing board is well equipped to handle these situations unless the board feels contrary. Hearing none, the last item under this uh. Section of the agenda, appeal number Z dash twenty-three dash two thousand nine. Alan Dupuy for the property located at one one four Dolington Road. Tax parcel number two zero dash zero two zero dash one one five. Applicant request to variance from township zoning orders two hundred dash twenty-three point capital B. In order to install a two hundred seventy-two square foot concrete patio. Which would increase the impervious surface from the existing twenty-two point seven percent. To twenty-four point four percent where eighteen percent is allowable amount. Again, consistent with the prior matter. This is not in a flood zone and we would recommend deferral unless the board feels to the contrary. Hearing no motion, uh, that's all I have for that. I know community development's next and we have two items under that, uh, which I'll, I guess, I guess defer to. Mr. Medjewski, but I'll be involved in that process as well.
Thank you, Mr. Trillo.
First item would be uh. Subdivision of land development plan for eleven oh one Big Oak Road. And here for the applicant is attorney Joseph Blackburn from Will, uh. Whistler Pearlstein and I would assume. Your engineering representatives, is that correct?
Yes, good evening, Joe Blackburn from Whistler Pearlstein, here on behalf of the applicant Triumph Development Group LLC. Uh, to my right. Uh, is Kristen Holmes, uh, project engineer from Holmes Cunningham. And to her right is Terry Nardone, um, from the applicant. Um, we are here this evening with respect to the application concerning the property at eleven oh one Big Oak Road. Uh, the subject property of five and three quarter acres is located in the R two medium density zoning district. And is presently improved with a single family detached dwelling together with a deed carriage, uh, both of which take access from um, Big Oak Road. Have the ability to put. The planes up. Thanks. Um, applicant as a part of tonight's application um, is seeking approvals to um, subdivide the property into six lots. Three of which uh, would take access to Big Oak Road as shown on the plan before you, two of which from a shared use driveway, one of which from an existing driveway which services the existing home. And three uh, of which would take access uh, via dedicated driveways um, from Elbow Lane. Um, I am pleased to report that the plan generally depicted uh, on the screen before you is entirely by right from a zoning standpoint. No. Uh, manner of zoning relief was required or is required uh, to accommodate this level of development. Um, although this is admittedly the first. Official uh, instance of this application being before this board, that is not to say that it has not. Uh, undergone a fair amount of scrutiny over the past several months by the various boards and bodies of the township as well as the various township professionals. Um, specifically. Um, we have appeared before the township planning commission on two prior occasions, the first of which being in September of last year. Second of which being in February of this year, and I'm pleased to report that the sum and substance of those appearances was a unanimous recommendation for approval. Uh, together with um, a grant of all the waivers that were requested. Um, again, uh, not that it is the um, the only uh, such instance, but we did also uh, revise and resubmit several iterations of this plan. Uh, which ultimately culminated in the issuance of the most recent township engineer review letter dated March tenth. Uh, and again, I'm pleased to report that all of the items contained in there from a plan design perspective are are not even will complies, but have complied. Um, uh, they're from a, from a plan design perspective. Um, all comments have have been incorporated into those plans. The the uh, additional layer of of oversight and back and forth that I'll that I'll add uh, is that as a result of one of, I believe, the first uh, appearance before the planning commission. Um, we did engage an arborist um, to confirm some of the tree count numbers. Um, as a result of our second appearance before the planning commission and some subsequent boards and bodies of the township, the township. Um, employed its own arborist to uh, vet and confirm the conclusions of the applicant's arborist. Um, those two professionals are uh, in lockstep with respect to um, the nature of the existing woodlands on the property. Uh, and particularly with respect to the status of the various trees uh, on the property that are earmarked for removal. Also submitted um, with our materials uh, is a um, a waiver request letter, a waiver letter dated uh, February twenty-fourth. Which um, fairly and accurately reflects the waivers that we are uh, requesting as a part of this project. Again, planning commission saw fit to recommend uh, approval of those, and I think it's fair to say that uh, the several conversations between. Uh, the project engineer and the township engineer have resulted in um, Mr. Pockle's comfort level with uh, all if not uh, with most, if not all of those as well. Um, I'm happy to go through those. I'll take my direction from the board, given the hour. Um, and um. At this point, uh, I would simply, uh, I I would also add that um, the solicitor's office was kind enough to um. Circulate a draft um. Potential um. Letter, uh, the conditions for which uh, are all acceptable to the applicant. Um, and uh, we've had ongoing dialogue again with the township staff and professionals, Mr. Medjewski included. In order to um, I feel faithfully work through uh, all the comments and questions and concerns that have been raised. Over the past several months um. To the point where, uh, again, the plan before you now is not a will comply, but it has complied um, with all those uh, comments. So. Against that backdrop, um, uh, and given the hour, I'll I'll make myself uh, Ms. Holmes and to the extent necessary, Ms. Nardone available for questions. That any members of uh, board may have.
And what I'm going to suggest with you, I will not read the entire letter, at least to the beginning, and what I would suggest is a motion just to engage discussion. To approve the uh. Submission subject to the conditions set forth in the letter from our office to uh. Uh, Mr. Blackburn's office dated, actually dated tomorrow, June first, twenty twenty-three. So, but before we do that, just a couple of things, uh. Blackburn, you mentioned waivers. One of the waivers that was requested uh, had to do with the amount of um. Waiver from section one seventy-eight dash eighty-five point H four regarding replacement trees. Uh, you have indicated in your uh. Last uh, submission. That you would agree to uh, replacement of the trees uh, of no less than two point five inches in caliber. Now, I think. The only question I have there, we have two different numbers. And I think there may be some questions from board members about the the number of trees as well. Uh, one of the uh, replaced, one of where we asked for the replacement is two hundred nine and the waiver was requested for two hundred five. I'm not sure how we reconcile that, maybe. Uh, this Holmes could could help us with that. I just want to.
Yeah, um, and.
Maybe or Andy or anybody. So I just want to make sure we have the right number.
Yeah, fair point. That, um, again, that that waiver request letter was from February twenty-fourth. Um, subsequent to the issuance of that, we did have the township's own arborist got to the site to verify the numbers. Um, again, they were in agreement, lockstep with our arborist reports, with the exception of one tree. Um, the sum and substance of it is one tree being removed, which created for additional replacement trees. So that two oh five was increased to two oh nine to reflect the fact that. As a result of the township's arborist, there was one additional tree being removed, which would require replacement.
The four for one ratio we're talking about.
Based on the size of that tree, yes, it was a four for one, yeah.
And Mr. Pockle, you've uh, seen, you you agree with this?
Yeah, I I I agree with that statement.
Um, so if somebody wants to make a motion to approve it, subject to the conditions set forth in the letter. As modified. You can do that and that can start the discussion too. So we need a board member to do that.
Oh, so moved.
Would there be a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. So now it's up before discussion. Any supervisor questions or comments?
Mr. Renner?
Sure. Mr. Pockle, in terms of. Let's start with the. I'm just looking at landscape plan, but when we look at um. Any potential needs for stormwater management or other infrastructure? Are you comfortable that um? Grading drainage? All that, all that good stuff is is considered here?
Uh, yes, it's i i it's met the township ordinance there providing, uh, so there's six lots on the development. Um, the the three lots that are. Up on on Big Oak Road or take access off of Big Oak Road. Drain towards a. I guess a a surface stormwater management basin. It's in the front. It's the the dark green area shown, yeah. So, um. Those three lots. Uh, drain to that basin, which uh, holds the the runoff uh, until the the storm has passed and and meters the flow out into the stormwater management system. Within Big Oak Road. Uh, after the storm event has passed. The other three lots in the back along Elbow Lane or that take access off of Elbow Lane have individual stormwater management systems that are underground. And uh, will take runoff from the the impervious surfaces, the the house, the driveway. And any overland flow and direct them into the underground stormwater management systems on those individual lots. So we've analyzed it to make sure that. A, they're meeting the township requirements as far as uh, a water quality. as far as a water quality volume of recharge into the, into the ground. But then also that they are not increasing the rate of runoff from the development in any direction.
And one of the lot, well, two of the lots on that come off the Big Oak require shared driveway. Is that correct?
Correct. Yeah, that's, I believe that's lot one and lot three.
There's going to be an access agreement of some type.
Yes, there would have to be.
Is any of the, is anything going to be dedicated to the township for our, for upkeep or maintenance?
No, then it would be, that would be on the property owners.
Before I get to the tree issue, is any, anything else that you'd like to point out relative to their site plan and design? Engineering, anything, concerns, waivers, et cetera?
No, not really.
All right. Now, in terms of the trees, the arborist that they hired is recommending that 2,004 inches of trees be removed from tree replacement requirements for our ordinance. How many total trees were on the site that were, were surveyed? Rough?
I'd have to pull up the landscape plan.
The question was how many?
How many, how many trees in total were surveyed?
I don't have that answer offhand. It was every tree that was on the property that's noted on the, on the survey plan, but I, I apologize. I don't have the total count.
Okay, because when I, the numbers that I'm, and I may be off by a couple here, but this short estimating, so forgive me, that I've seen were 40 trees that will be removed are, are times five for replacement. Plus, you know, as you just described with the 205 versus 209, roughly 40 is probably, probably off by one there. And then 119 were deemed to be dead or dying or hazard trees. That, okay.
With the township arborist, he went out and he had just a difference of trees that were then switched to be healthy.
Right. And just to clarify, this is not a township employed arborist. This was a third party contractor that was hired to, to do an assessment as an arborist. Just, just so folks at home know that we don't employ an arborist. So full disclosure, I'm a biologist. That's my job. I'm an ecologist. I look at trees every day. Did, I was looking at the letter and I didn't see anything in the letter from the arborist that went through and describes. Well, let me, let me back up. So that's 40 trees times five, well, two, so be 209. If we added in those 119, right, that's closer to 160.
And I would say not all of those 119 are within the limit of disturbance.
And not all of them are pure five to one ratio. It depends on the size of trees.
Okay.
Just multiplied by five. I mean, that's a probably a good rule of thumb, but you know, we end at 209, which is obviously not a multiple five for reasons.
Right. So, but going from, we're, we're probably three times greater the number of tree. One, three times greater the number of trees are said to be dead or dying than those that are said to not be dead or dying. Right. In what, when I look at the trees that were identified as a native Pennsylvania hardwood forest. But yet I don't see anything in the report so that I don't see any pictures, any, any real scientific assessment that shows that these meet the definition for dead trees per our ordinance. Now, what, what does that mean to the township? One, that means a lot of trees are going to get taken out when we prioritize our trees, as your colleague knows very well at your law firm. And, but what that means in terms of dollars and cents to the township is literally hundreds of thousands of dollars in our tree replacement fund that would not be paid because an arborist has determined that the vast majority of the trees on a very wooded property are dead. Now, I, and I just don't see any evidence of that here.
Be clear, that's your arborist. That's.
It's not my arborist.
The town, the, the arborist employed by the township.
Not employed by the township.
Paid by the township. I'm sorry. The arborist contracted for and paid by the township.
Right.
And when made that determination. The, the professional arborist has made that determination and the, the report, I, I didn't compare it, but it says very clearly the woodland is failing.
It is not, that is not a scientific term. We also have an environmental advisory council made up of other scientists that do this every day. That when they read and we do have letters from them, I'm not sure if you've reviewed them. They make very similar assessments and, and ask similar questions to what I've seen. So based, based on that arborist's report, I cannot make a determination that the township can agree to that particular assessment. Now, you, your engineering is fine, right? Per engineer, your stormwater management's fine, your grading plan's fine. You're, you know, you have a, you have a shared driveway, which sometimes we have concerns about because how neighbors interact over the years, but there's going to be an agreement in place. You're going to have all that there. But this is an issue that is literally worth, not everyone thinks of trees necessarily, but this issue is literally worth hundreds of thousands of dollars to the township. And I need to see evidence just because someone, someone writes, writes a very short letter and offers no scientific evidence to, to support that letter. But given the, the dollar value, given the dollar value, I, I could not vote to approve this until we actually get a report that can be evaluated for, for accuracy. Because when I drive by the site, when I look at aerials, when I look at even Google imagery, sure, I see an understory where we have vines and everything else, but that's the, that's the whole Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, right? Vines can be removed, dead branches can be removed, but trees will keep living, especially in a native Pennsylvania forested habitat.
One of the key findings that your arborist made this was not a native, that this was invasive species were pervasive throughout.
When you, when you look at the trees that are listed in this report, every one of them is listed, that's listed is a native species. Now, there may be non-native invasive vines growing on those species, like an English ivy or something, something along those lines or a, a, a vitus species, which is a grapevine or something like that, that happens. That's edge habitat. That can be removed through proper management. That's, that's fairly simple.
Well, I understand the concern. It's, all I can say is there have been two arborists, one of whom has been, now I'll use the word employed, you can, paid by at least the township, who have reached the same conclusion that these 109 trees were dead disease or dying. I'm not in the business of questioning other professionals in their conclusions. I'm not, I will readily admit I'm not an arborist. So I do know Mr. Meduski and, and maybe Mr. Kratz or have had conversations with the arborist that they've selected on the township's behalf. I can't speak to his qualifications other than what's in the report, which is that he's, you know, a registered certified arborist. And that his conclusion is that these trees are dead disease or dying.
So has your engineer, have you done any soil sampling at the site? Groundwater testing?
Our firm has not, but we've done infiltration testing for the stormwater management.
Has there been any lab testing of the soils of the groundwater here?
Lab testing.
Because what I'm trying to figure out is why we have the vast majority of trees on a, on a wooded site is dying. Is, is there something else going on that we need to be aware of?
I certainly can't speak to that, but I would imagine it's the woodland's not being maintained over the years and being overgrown with the invasive species and other items noted within the report.
If, if I could just interject, we've been advised that the arborist in question is available by Zoom if necessary.
Township.
Yes, I'm, we're not asking, we, we didn't contact your arborist.
Not our arborist.
That would be helpful.
So we, we could bring him in if that would help, just clarify. I mean, well, I'll just, I'll just say he's available. If that's something the board would be interested in entertaining. And then Mr. McCartney, he's already indicated he would, so.
Is it the consensus of the board to bring the arborist in? I guess we should.
He's indicated, yes.
Let's do it.
Other than that, I don't, I don't want to cut you off supervisor. Do you have any other questions on that till the arborist comes on? Because if not, we can have somebody else question. But if you have others.
If, if the arborist does come on, I would like him to respond in detail to the EAC's letter dated May 14th, where they go through definitions in our code about dead or dying trees.
Right. But in the interim, if he doesn't come on Dan, are there other things that you want?
Questions that either you have or any other supervisor have about the, the approval process, which could include the trees as well. I don't want to cut anybody off.
Yeah, my, my main issues are with the trees. One, and ultimately I want folks to understand that this, this isn't a small issue when we talk about 100 trees, when it's, when we talk about 100 plus trees or whatever the number ends up being. You're generally multiplying that by five as a rule of thumb. And then when you look at the cost of per tree, it, it adds up to several hundred thousand dollars to the township.
Can we get clarification on that, Jim? If you're around, because I thought it was one to four. Listen, I want all the money in the tree bank we can get, but I want to make sure we're not making people think like there's a half a million dollars in tree money coming over these 40 trees we're talking about.
If you count all the trees that are dead and dying as needing to be subject to tree replacement and include ones that are actually outside of the limited disturbance, then it would be several hundred thousand dollars. But I think the number is probably double or triple what it would be. So it would be a couple of hundred thousand dollars for the six lots, maybe like $50,000 per lot.
I thought we were talking about 40 trees.
Well, the, their arborist assessed the trees and said that a number of them were dead, diseased, dying, which on our ordinance do not require anything to remove. They're not required to be replaced. So there, and then our arborist went out there, walked the site with all the trees marked out in the field, looked at them, counted those numbers, and was generally in agreement with the exception of the couple of trees that had been noted.
Thank you.
Any other supervisors have any questions? If not, I, I don't have any questions. I, I'll do the lot of, I might as well wait till the arborist comes on so we can, we.
I mean, I, I know, Jim, I think you, you, you selected the arborist, right? Or contracted. Is there any, I mean, any background or information? I don't, I'm not independently familiar with the Rockwell. So how did you?
Well, he's licensed, credentialed. He's a certified arborist, has all the necessary credentials that I know our EAC had requested that we have an arborist come out and check the trees for us. The arborists we selected, they're currently employed as a consultant to a number of municipalities, including Radnor Township, White Marsh Township and several others. So they're well credentialed. And when I did speak to the arborist earlier today, he said he was going to be traveling on the road like from eight to 10 o'clock. So I'm not sure if he's there yet. I just emailed him to see if he's available to zoom in and hopefully we'll hear back from.
Well, yeah, there, yeah.
Chairman Weiss, do you want to go over public comment regarding the issue?
Why do we do that? Let's have some public comment.
Yeah, there are, there are three people in the room who are for public comment. And I guess there's some people on, on, online too.
Okay, let's have the people.
So while we have the folks in the room, go first in, in order to identify yourself by name and address, and then you can make your comments.
Hi, I'm Lisa Tenny. I live at 156 Pinnacle Circle and nearby one of the neighborhoods that border. And I am a professional biology with a PhD degree. And I don't see these numbers of dead trees. They survived a hailstorm, okay, where a lot of property, homes were damaged. And in fact, they probably buffered the damage to those homes. I hope the board of supervisors will not approve the requested waiver for the, for the developers. The, the developer presented the plan August 22nd and 22, and there were a lot of neighbors and they had many concerns, flooding, traffic on Big Oak and honestly, and the woodlands, of course, was, was a big problem. And they didn't address those at all, as far as I can see. And in fact, they've been very disingenuous. They, they came and purchased a property that had trees and known woodlands, mature trees. And they are trying to manipulate the ordinance to their own advantage. And it's plain to see. And I hope you all read the May 2nd EO, the Environmental Commission's letter to you all. You could have easily eliminated plot six, which is the most heavily wooded plot of, of the six and just left it woodlands. And you would have still beautiful five properties and you wouldn't have to hire a lawyer and put us all through this. So again, trees give to all. They're essential for life itself. They shelter us from the storm. In an article published in August 22nd, in, I'm sorry, yes, back in August of 2022, Penn State Extension talked about the importance of woodlands in absorbing water. They can absorb as much as 18 inches of rainfall that fall. Now, 1101 Big Oak sits high, okay, especially lots six and five. And the flow is downstream to Rock Creek. A single mature deciduous tree intercepts 500 to 76 gallons of water. Saplings and bushes do not. And say, there's 200 trees, mature deciduous trees that are being eliminated with, and there's not a lot that are diseased. But we'll, we'll say, given number of 200, that means if 200 trees, mature trees are removed, then 100, 120,000 gallons are running downstream, potentially affecting the existing homes such as on downhill near, near the creek. There was a concerned resident at that time that flooding would occur to her older, it's an older development. So anyway, there's no reason to allow the manipulation by these developers who trivialize the ordinance and the negative impact on neighborhoods that are existing. No one landscapes like mother nature. If you approve the requested waiver by the developer, the board of supervisors demonstrates their allegiance to the developer and disregards the township's environment, the work of the EAC committee, and most importantly, the LMT citizens. Thank you.
A couple of quick responses, because I think there's some misconceptions. The tree removal, the, the trees being removed are 100% permissible. We are not seeking any zoning relief, any sourdough relief to exceed the mac, the permissible scope of tree removal. So there is, the, the, the scope of tree removal is 100% permitted by right. No waiver, no variance, no nothing. And the waiver that was requested by the applicant and is reflected in our, our, our waiver request letter was in fact to accommodate the recommendation of the EAC, which was to have a breakdown of certain shade tree versus canopy trees, right? The ordinance requires 100% canopy trees, right, for all replacements, two and a half inch caliber trees of a certain breakdown. The EAC itself, in that very May 14th letter, recommended that we break that down and say. In that very May fourteenth letter, recommended that we break that down and say, okay, let's do twenty-five percent canopy. And seventy-five percent shrubs understory shade tree. So. The waiver that she is, that Ms. Tenny is suggesting you reject is, is. The suggestion of the EAC, just to be clear. And I would add that we are not seeking a waiver to permit any reduction of our tree replacement obligation, whether that be through plantings or fee and loo. So. I'll just add those, those pieces of information to the.
We have two more speakers in the room. I think one more online.
Thank you for your time. My name is Tom Tracy. My property or backs directly up to the, to the property at eleven oh one. I live at two oh two South Eastern Lane. I'm going to take a little different approach here. I've read all the documents. There's a couple of things that stand out to me. Number one, that the homes are targeted to be nine hundred thousand ish as far as the sale price is concerned. Okay? Number two, the township revenue from taxes is targeted to be in the neighborhood of approximately twenty some thousand dollars a year. Okay, for property rounded up to a hundred and twenty thousand dollars per annual. I hope those figures are pretty accurate. I read them offline. Okay? So if you look at that and you look at the tree waiver, first of all, why does a policy exist to begin with? To be enforced and upheld. So I'm sorry, sir. I didn't interrupt when you spoke. Thank you. Accepted. So when you're, when you're dealing with that, why does a policy exist to begin with?
Can I, can I, I can answer that question.
Please, David.
State law, municipality planning code does have a provision in it that allows for waivers. So it's a state law that establishes the, 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 the. Existence of that. Now, whether municipalities want to follow that or not, well, they have, they may have to follow it under certain circumstances if they're requested, but just so you know, this is not something. Lower Makefield invented on its own. Just so you know that.
Okay. So when you look, when you put the numbers, you put pen to paper, sooner or later, you come up with a figure. That figure could be five hundred thousand for trees. It could be greater than that. We had so many people at the planning commission discussions about the water. I was one of them. There were several others. When you think about Derbyshire and then downstream into Winding Way, those folks aren't here. I hope they're online. Because their voice said, you're, you're not addressing it, whether it's a rain garden or whatever you want to call it. It's a repository for water. And how do we know that the capacity is going to capture all the groundwater that's there? I would just submit to you that this is my neighborhood. This is my backyard. And I certainly don't want an exception to be granted.
Thank you, Mr. Tracy. Now, Mr. Marshall is approaching. I think he's the last one in the room. I believe there's at least one online.
First, could, could we put that schematic of the homes that are being built back on the screen? I just have a quick question.
There it is.
Hey, Mr. Marsh, take the mic with you if you're going to go there so we can hear you.
Doug Marshall, ten oh nine North Elbow Lane, my property or the development yardly crested adjacent to eleven oh one. Big Oak Road. And I, I just wanted to inquire, I, I don't know the answer to this, but when I look at the pieces of property that. Are proposed. Along with the, I, I guess what are, what are lawns? I don't know what this green area is here around the, the homes. I guess those are lawns. Am I to understand or is it correct that that does not exceed the twenty-five percent woodland ceiling?
That's correct. Yes.
Now, do you have, what's your, what do you, I mean, do you have some evidence to that effect? Because when I look at it, just. My eye tells me it's, it's in excess.
The fully engineered plans prepared by a certified licensed professional engineer, which have been reviewed by the township's certified licensed professional engineer and. The township zoning officer and all the other professionals, mostly on, on that side of the dais who have confirmed that.
Thank you. The other thing I, I wanted to address was. The, the May fourteenth letter of the Environmental Advisory Commission, and I'm sure you've seen that. And, and they raise a number of concerns here. And I know that in your presentation, sir, you, you placed a great deal of, of weight on the fact that the Rockwell. I think that was the name, Rockwell or Hopewell, arborist, Rockwell, was quote unquote independent. And. This is something that the EAC itself noticed. And they indicated that they were somewhat dismayed that. They were not invited along. But I, it, it just struck me as very odd that. The so-called independent arborist was accompanied by. The two arborists from the same company that you had hired. As well as the developer. Because it struck me again that these people. I guess. Rockwell would just naturally be under some sense of, of pressure. There's probably some kind of incestuous relationship which exists. Between arborists, between the, between the developer and the arborist. He wants business. Why wouldn't you have invited? The EAC along for a walkthrough during that point in time. I mean, when you look here at this report that the EAC wrote, and these are real professionals. You know, like, like Mr. Grenier, I, I mean, they take great exception. With, with the way this whole process was done. It just seems disingenuous. Nobody is questioning your right. It's just basic free enterprise, the right to private property. But, but I mean, you, you just, it, it just reeks of, of. Of a disingenuous approach here. And. I, I agree. When I looked at the Rockwell report, it seemed to say pretty much nothing other than. I agree with what the two other arborists said, and they were from the same company. So I, I just, I, I don't like it. And I'd ask the, the, the board to, to. Make sure the EAC fully signs off on this before full approval. If they sign off on it. Well, then I, I really guess I have no other, no problem with it. They have a right to, to develop it. So. But I think without the EAC's full approval, without Mr. Grenier's approval and everybody else's approval. I just feel this is, you know, a bad idea. Thank you very much.
And I, I think there was a question in there which I'll respond to. You're referring to comment number one in the May fourteenth letter. Using the dismayed language. And that comment is just simply inaccurate. There were township professionals that were on site during that site. It was not, as you suggest, any sort of pressure exerted by Ms. Holmes, a very intimidating figure here as, as we can all see. And there were in fact township professionals. These were, the, the comment number one is incorrect.
So when it says no representative from the township.
Incorrect.
That's incorrect.
That is incorrect.
So Alan Gresser.
He can confirm that.
Well, can you tell me who was there?
I don't, I don't know. I wasn't. I mean, Mr. Crasser, I'm sure maybe Ms. Ms. Holmes was there. Jim, I don't know.
The township planner was there on behalf of the township.
I, I don't know anything about the township planner. I don't know if he's a botanist. I don't know what is, what his qualifications are.
That's the purpose of the arborist. The arborist, that's why the arborist was there. The arborist hired by the township.
I mean, did you look at the rest of this letter and the specificity and the reasons why he felt that this was a?
Mr. Marshall. Mr. Mr. Mar, I.
He's listening, Freddie. He's just off, you can't see him from the camera.
Just, can you get a little closer to the microphone? We can't hear you. That's all.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. I, I think the bottom line is when the EAC is happy, then I would be happy. If they're not happy, then I'm not happy. I've been very impressed with how professional they are. And they've written a note here, the most recent saying, we, we, we don't agree with this. So all I'm asking is that they work with the EAC. Get their specific approval and then I have no problem.
And I, there was one, at least one person online. Is that correct with comments?
Yes, I will bring them in right now.
Thank you.
Our eight to eleven, you are live with the board.
Yes, my name's Joseph King. I'm a resident at one thousand one North Elbow Lane. And I'm here to support my neighbors, Doug Marshall, as well as Tom Tracy. In regards to obviously the issue tonight, and it's been a long night. I just want to say, I'm not going to get into any of the engineering, but. You know, Jeff, who sold the property to the builder. Was in the tree business and the comment was made at the table tonight that the disease and the maintenance of the trees, et cetera. Well, you know. He needed to sell that property one day. And Jeff's a good man. And. Now, our family's been here for thirty years and we have a wonderful view. Into the. The grandness of the farms across the street and the way everyone from Tom to Doug and the way Tom keeps the neighborhood. He's basically our captain of the, he is the captain of the neighborhood. And see him so concerned in regards, he has a right to be concerned as his property sits right there. And I just know that Jeff, over all these years that I've known him, would have not. Had trees diseased and not maintained, especially when he's in the tree business. So I vote no. Save the trees. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there, is there anybody else online? No, okay, thank you.
There's not, that's.
Any more board comment? Do we have, is the arbor, did? Is he available, Jim? He's not. Okay. So the arbors is not apparently available. Any other board comments, questions?
Would it be prudent to possibly table this such that we would have a chance to talk to the arbors?
Well, the, the applicant would have to agree to an extension that today, I believe the deadline is today. I'm mistaken. Is that correct?
There are fifty-three minutes. Yeah.
Right. I mean, you could ask for table. The problem is you'd have to get an agreement from, from the applicant to do that. So.
What deadline are we working against?
The. Time to, for, for approval, it's been given, I think, two extensions now?
At least two extensions. Yeah, we, like I said, we, we were before the planning commission in September of last year and then again in February. Took the township a fair amount of time to get its arborist lined up. And then the township has had its own arborist report for a month now. And look, it's your arborist's report, employee or not. It is the arborist that the township hired. To present, to prepare its own report, to analyze the findings of the applicant's arborist. If you're, you're of a mind to question your own professionals, then, then so be it. But that's what you're asking here. That's what you're, you're suggesting is. We, we don't have the confidence in the own person that we've hired because we're not talking about a waiver for replacement or for removal. The, we're simply talking about. How much of those trees that are permissibly removed are dead, diseased and dying? That is, that is the, the only issue that I'm hearing, at least in this vein.
Respectfully, I, I, I don't think I've asked any questions.
I'm, I'm, I.
Right?
You collectively, the board, I'm.
But so question though, if those trees weren't labeled as dead, diseased or dying, which actually isn't necessarily how our. Ordinance defines what trees shouldn't be removed. And I think that's probably an issue with the arbors not understanding our ordinances. And just using what they understand generally. From how they may do their work with their private developer clients, what they might consider. Some, some of the descriptions of a hazard tree were, I'll, I'll use the word laughable in, in the, in the original arbors report. But the question I have is if those, any number of those trees. Because they, they are large. He does list the size and, and you know, DBH of these trees. Most of them are well over ten DBH, ten inches diameter breast height. When you look at our woodlands ordinance, what is defined as a woodlands, right? We have two scenarios here where. A woodland is one quarter acre or more of wooded land where the largest trees measure at least six inches diameter at a height of forty, four point five feet. From the ground and the associated intermediate layers in those areas, including the under story shrubs and smaller trees, et cetera. The other definition is the woodlands are also grove of trees forming one canopy where ten, oh, just ten or more trees. Measure at least ten inches in diameter at that same four and a half feet, which is diameter breast height. When you look at the arborist report. The original arborist report. And you look at the number of trees in there, there, there are. They, they give you the, for the board members, this is, I'm, I'm referencing the December seventh, twenty twenty-two. Keystone Tree Experts Horticultural Consultants. Letter where nearly. I don't know if there's a tree under sixty, six inches DBH listed here. I see twenty. Most of them are twenties. In the teens to twenties in terms of DBH. To the point where my question is, if, if, if we look at those trees, would we in fact have woodlands on site? Where. Impacts to wood, woodlands at the site would require zoning variances. So that's what I want to understand is because all, basically all of these trees here fall under the woodlands definition. In one of the two scenarios, right? The six, greater than six inches or greater than ten inches, depending on how you cluster them, right? If, if all those trees were alive, and I'm certain some of them are dead. I'm not going to disagree with that. I'm certain some of them are. Would that put it under woodlands? And then that, would that kick it all the way over to a zoning hearing board request where the variance is required?
I think a couple of things to help answer that question. The hundred and sixteen trees that were determined to be dead, dying, diseased. Are not all within the limit of disturbance. So if those theoretically were determined to be healthy trees, they would not be removed. They're only being removed because they are in a hazardous condition at this time, based on these reports. There are a portion of them within the limit of disturbance, but the majority of them are actually in the wooded areas that are to remain.
Can you, and they don't show up. I'm, I'm looking at a hard copy version of what you had on the screen. In terms of the. Your LOD where you have. This is sort of a cartoon version that I have her printout. Because all literally, all of these trees are large enough to be can, under the woodlands definition, right? What I'm wondering is, what I'd like to understand is. What that LOD, how much of it and where would it actually have impact in area that would meet the definition of woodlands?
Yeah. So the LOD that we have shown on, and we have that specifically shown on the erosion and sediment control plans within the plan set. So. Apologize, it's not up on the screen. But that is the limit of disturbance that we have accounted for the woodlands disturbance, which is the construction limit of disturbance. The areas outside of that, within the existing woodlands area contain a significant portion of those dead, dying, diseased trees. That are coming out purely for that condition that's been determined by the arbors.
So are, to some, are you, are you saying that the LOD as for, as proposed is not going into the, into a woodlands area? Irrespective of, of whether or not you're considering that those hundred, that's, that's all I want to understand.
Correct. It's only going into a small portion, which is essentially a box around. Two of the lots, because on lot four, we've used the existing clearing area for the building envelope of that lot and the existing driveway for that lot off of Elbow Lane. Lots one and two along Big Oak do not have woodlands within them. So there's no disturbance proposed there. Lot three, which is the share drive that goes further back. Again, the house is situated furthest as much forward to minimize any tree disturbance from those woodlands. So lots five and six off of elbow would really be the bigger portions where we are in the wooded area. But correct, we've, we've done this to minimize the woodlands disturbance to the best extent practical. While also acknowledging the dead, dying disease from a safety perspective, being removed separately.
So to put it another way, and I'll pose this as a question. Let's assume, Kristen, that every one of the DDD, the triple D trees that the arbors have agreed or suggested are DDD are not. Let's assume every single one of them is. the arborists have agreed or suggested are DDD are not. Let's assume every single one of them is alive and healthy. We would, and, and our limit of disturbance has not changed or does not change. We would still, under the current plan, the current layout, be within our permissible scope of woodlands disturbance in that scenario, correct?
So, I, I want to check that box to make sure that we're not missing something, or zone, and I know you don't want to go to the zoning hearing board. I understand that.
But yes, we've
I just want to make sure that we're all understand that regardless of
We know the trees are a big, a big topic of conversation. So that was one of the first things we looked at as we were getting into this, is that woodlands disturbance. And then the arborist sort of came later into that, as it came into the, the health of the tree.
And, and just to be clear, again, the one hundred and, or the, the forty trees that are that are being, or excuse me, the, the one hundred nine trees identified as triple D are not exclusive, you know, they're not exclusively within the LOD, they are site wide. So this is a forestry management identification of those triple Ds. It's, you know, even though these are not limits of disturbance areas, if, if two arborists agree that they are dead, diseased, and dying, it makes good sense to take them out. So that, leave them all in, leave them in if, if you want, and it is not as if we are circumventing the woodlands disturbance by surreptitiously or gerrymandering a, a building envelope and then calling all the trees within that dead, diseased, or dying. That is absolutely not the case here whatsoever.
Something that may help illustrate that is with the, the township arborist report where he questioned three, three of those trees that were in the original report. Two of those trees are outside of our limit of disturbance. So that's why the tree replacement number only went up by one additional healthy tree, because one of those three is within our disturbance area, the other two are outside. So they would just remain as they're now qualified as healthy.
So you're just removing all those trees for the sake of, to make the lots look nicer?
No, hazardous condition.
Because they are dead, diseased, and dying.
But they're not in the limit of disturbance, they're not going to fall on a house.
Good. They, they're outside of the limit of disturbance with the height of those trees and the maturity of those trees. If they fall potentially onto another tree, they certainly could impact not only this property, but immediately surrounding properties.
The, what we can all agree on, I think, is that within the limit of disturbance, forty trees are being removed, forty-one trees are being removed, and our tree replacement obligation is based exclusively on that number. That's, we're all in agreement on that, I think, engineers, arborists, everybody. So candidly, I would, I, I don't even know that it matters whether they're classified as dead, diseased, or dying, because what we can all agree on is that the forty trees which constitute our tree replacement obligation, whether it be by replanting or fee and lieu, are, are contained within the LOD. The rest is surplusage. It is, yes, we're removing them for, um, candidly, help for, you know, healthy forestation, but you know, it seems like the, the brain damage to, to do that is probably not worth the squeeze at this point, so leave them all up.
Yeah, just to clarify, you said, uh, because I want to make sure we do this for the approval. Are you proposing replacing the trees or paying the fee and lieu?
Uh, the latter. Um, well, I would say the, the, the latter, uh, is the preference based on
When we get to that.
Able to be, what's able to be accommodated on the lot and that whole conversation again.
We'll make sure we
How are you defining your LOD? Because when I'm, when I am doing a plan and I have to go in front of the soil, soil conservation district and I'm removing seventy-five percent of the trees to do something, true removal is considered part of the LOD. So I'm trying to figure out.
Yeah, so from an erosion control perspective, we have included the overall area as part of our MPDES permit, because there will be equipment going within those areas for the unhealthy trees being removed. From a construction perspective, the limit of disturbance is separately shown within the graded areas of each of the lots within the tract.
Which is basically their yards in the building footprint and the, and the driveways. Right. But from a regulatory perspective, the LOD is inclusive of the, of the, of the forest, of the currently forested area.
Correct.
So when you're, when you're calculating your one or five acre, you know what I'm talking about here with the, your thresholds for different permits, that is include, that is included in your calculations for your limits of disturbance, that's
That is to allow the equipment to get through the woodlands to be able to remove those trees that are outside of our construction area.
Which is by definition your LOD.
Or the conservation district, yes.
Right. Okay. So, one, one of the, one of the interesting comments in, in this, in this, uh, uh, from the arborist reporter, trees are community organisms and rely on each other to survive. Trees internal to the site are protected by those on the perimeter of the wooded area. They are protected from winds and their root systems are intertwined with each other. So, that's kind of proving that, like, when you remove all those trees, you're removing the protections of the trees and you're, you're eventually going to do harm to the, to the remaining trees that you're going to keep there. I, right, so that, that's just how it works. So if you're removing trees, is there another reason to do that? Because you're, are you going to replace them with grass? Or what, what are you? Are, are you creating larger lawns by doing that? What's, what's the?
No, because the area of the woodlands is still an overall woodlands area, even with these dead, dying, diseased trees coming out. It's still a general overall canopy that will remain with those interior trees coming out. And I, I'm certainly not an arborist, but I would say that providing that additional space between the trees would allow those healthy trees to grow and be able to supplement.
Yeah, that, that's not really what arborists do. Like, an, an arborist would, might assess a tree, the type, the size, whether or not it has a hole in it. That's, what you're talking about is what an ecologist would do, what a scientist would do, possibly a landscape architect, there, there's a difference. So taking out a bunch of, a bunch of trees to promote canopy growth through forest natural succession is not something we would ever hire an arborist to ever make an, to make a suggestion on or a recommendation on. That is not, that's not within the purview of being an arborist.
It's a suggestion of your EAC, just to be clear.
No, it's not.
It is.
That, no, no, it
It is to have
Gentleman, please.
No, 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 no. The, the suggestion of the EAC was to try and make things easier for you, was to add additional plantings in the under, not to remove the trees, but to add additional understory plantings within the same footprint of the existing trees without removing them. That is completely different from what you're suggesting.
It was in the context of the, of the replacement trees, so I don't know how, well, okay, fair enough. We misunderstood that then, I guess.
I think you did, but just, just so you know, I used to be on the AAC and I'm the EAC liaison to the board, so I've been over this with the EAC multiple times. Many members of the EAC are professional environmental scientists that develop tree plans that assess trees and habitat every day. They've been doing it for decades. You know, we have multiple members of the EAC that, that do this for a living. So when we, when we're being critical of an arborist's report, it's not just because they're, I'll use, they're not tree huggers. These are professionals, degreed, credentialed professionals that would, don't hire arborists to do their job. They, they go way above and beyond that. They work for engineering firms, they lead the environmental groups within engineering firms. Okay, so we understand what you're talking about and how you're doing what you're doing. But we wouldn't use an arborist to do it because of what an arborist does. If we're, there's doing it, if we're getting a survey done and we're having a tree surveyor go out with a surveyor and tagging trees and saying, okay, there, this, this is this species is that big, that, that's simple. That's generally what arborists do. They don't take that next step and talk about all these different things. That's what the scientist does, because that's what they're credentialed to do. So that's why I take issue with the way this report was delivered and the information provided, because it's missing gaps. And hearing that the former landowner was a James, I think you said he was a tree guy, right? And, and what the, the gentleman who called in, who has lived there for thirty years, speak to, he was a mulch guy.
It's a tree removal.
I think he was, he was tree removal, I'm not
Yeah, but
Yeah. Yeah, I think the, the, um, status of the trees, I guess, speak to what he was doing with it.
And, and, you know, there is, there is, there is a growing canopy there. We can see it. You know, it's not a bear, it's not a, you know, I have a neighbor who has a dead tree. I know it's dead because it broke in half during a, during a lightning storm and he never removed it, it's right at the corner, it's a massive trunk, and it falls apart all the time, and he's never been forced to remove it. That's a dead tree. I also have neighbors with very large trees that have ivy growing on them, that they actually, they call the tree services to clean up the ivy, and that, these are big, large black walnuts and some of the trees that are called out here. And they're, they do just fine wh- when they're, when they're attended to. So it's it's on the, it's on the landowner and the developer to maintain the trees if they're maintainable. It's not on the township to say, hey, just cut it down and, and pay a fee. That's not what we're trying to do here. So that's, that's the point I'm trying to get across.
Good.
Any more questions from the board? Uh, nothing for the public, it looks like. So, uh, here's what I'm going to do. We, uh, we have a motion and basically it would be, and I'm not going to go through all the terms of the letter, because you have a copy of the letter. It would be to comply with the different township professionals, uh, and their latest review letters. Uh, also, we did revise the, uh, uh, safe engineering, safe highway engineering, uh, uh, impact fee from six lots to five, because it's only five new lots, not six, correct? That's something we, I think we exchanged today. Uh, and then compliance with recommendations of, uh, the EAC and the arborist report. I understand it's going to be a disagreement with that, but uh, with a payment of fee and lieu of planting two hundred and nine replacement trees as permitted under the app board, is correct, that, that's the, that's the term?
I believe two, two hundred with the, the credit from the street trees, if we're two, two oh nine, sure.
Okay. I want to make sure we reconcile those two numbers, that's all.
There is, uh, and again, I'm going to belabor the point, I think in the past, you've granted credit for street trees that have been planted, we have
That's in the ordinance.
Yeah, so we have nine, which we had taken off from the two oh nine, so I think it's technically two hundred.
And then I added, uh, now it's also talked about the conservation easement, that's also in the, uh, the, uh, approval letter, correct? Uh, and then also, uh, I, I included, which was not earlier, the access agreement for uh, the driveway for common driveway for lots one and three. I'll just make sure that that's specified in there. And then, of course, the, uh, the other fees of lieu, compliance with all the different ordinances, uh, regulations, everything else that, that applies, which you've seen. The waivers are listed. They are now seven waivers, not eight, because the eighth waivers is, is no longer necessary. And then, uh, all the other comments were made tonight. So we have a motion, uh, and would include those terms and conditions. You would agree to those conditions as indicated, is that correct?
Uh, yeah, those would all be acceptable conditions, absolutely.
So it would be appropriate now to call for a vote.
Thank you, Mr. Truelove.
Welcome.
Call the question, all those in favor. Signify by saying aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, no?
No, nope.
Ayes have it, three, two.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And then there's, uh, one more community development matter. I see the two gentlemen came in earlier tonight, they're still here. Work. This is to request permit construction of an in-ground swimming, swimming pool for one eighty-nine Crestview Way. Uh, exceeding the allowable purpose surface shown in the recorded plan within the ratio permitted by zoning. Um, Jim, you want to? This is, we, we, we come across this every once in a while, it's, it's a plan issue, not a zoning issue.
Uh, that is correct. Uh, when the plan was done for the development, uh, they put an arbitrary restriction on the impervious surface that is recorded on the recorded plan. They're within the zoning requirements for impervious surface. And, uh, therefore they're requesting relief from the board of supervisors to, I guess, administratively revise the recorded plan to increase the restriction on impervious surface. They are providing stormwater management in accordance with our ordinance. The reason why this was on the recorded plan as a restriction is that they sized the basin for that amount of impervious surface on each and every lot. And since this one is above that voluntary restriction, they are now required to go under the board to request approval for that.
And Mr. Seacock, you're here for, I'm, for Hyde Escape, is that correct? Okay. All right. So if you have any questions by the board on this, uh, it'd be appropriate then to make a motion at least for discussion to approve the request as indicated in the, uh, agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Supervisor Granier, seconded by Supervisor Lewis. Any questions by the board, comments? Any public comment?
No.
There, and then we'll call the question, unless you want to say something, guys.
No, no, thank you.
Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Ayes have a five zero.
Sorry about that, gentlemen. Have a great night. Take care, man.
Can't get asked to the pool party.
No, you can't, definitely cannot.
Community development, next will be supervisor reports, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, I'm going to, I'm going to just bypass the item sixteen, go right to public comment for now. If there's anybody that wants to, it's been a late night, so if there's any public comment.
There is, uh, one gentleman, uh, or actually two people, uh, want to make public comment.
Brett, can we do other business really quick?
Uh, let's do the public comment first, and then we'll do the
Ms. Schaefer has decided she wants to speak again tonight.
Looking, when, um, we were talking about Macklesfield Park development, but I missed the slot, so here I am at eleven thirty. Sorry. Um, so my, um, neighborhood abuts Macklesfield Park. I've lived there for thirty years. Um, it's a beautiful park. Um, I have some issues with, um, some of the rumors I've been hearing about, um, the park and, um, some of the user groups that have, um, flooded the survey with, um, their opinion, and some of those, um, responses were not from LMT residents. Apparently seven percent, seven percent of, um, the responses on the survey were from residents outside of LMT. And I had, um, requested, had a conversation through email with Monica, asking whether those, um, responses were going to be left on the survey, and I was told that they were, which I feel is not fair for someone who possibly lives in New Jersey or another township that's playing sports at Macklesfield Park to be included in a potential decision on how the park is going to be used. That was one of my issues, um. The user groups, athletic user groups were lumped as one, um, group on the survey. And the other groups, walkers, bikers, naturalists, moms with strollers, were all separated. So when the responses come in, it looks like sports is, you know, the main goal um, that residents want to see increased at the park, which, um, even though, um, some of the responses were flooded by one particular, uh, sports league, um, sports were still not in the top, um, of the responses. I feel that, um, my neighborhood is the only neighbor, my neighborhood in Rivergate, Penn Valley Manor and Rivergate are the only, um, two neighborhoods which kind of join each other that, um, are, um, that abut the park. The canal is on one side, the river is on the other. The railroad tracks are on the other side, and that whole section behind the neighborhoods right now is natural open space, no lights, no fields. Um, occasionally during tournaments, um, nets are moved there, but only during the daytime, and it's very rare. So I'm asking that when you look at these plans, that you consider the neighbors that live along that back path, um, we ask that there be no lighting put there, no permanent field. If, um, any other permanent fields are to be added, we think they should stay closer to River Road and closer to where the other, um, permanent fields are. Um, it's a quality of life issue. It's a parking issue. We have people that park there already and cut through the neighborhood. There are no trashcans there now. It's a noise issue, light pollution. Um, and it just goes against everything that, um, Macklesfield Park was originally built to be. Um, I understand back in the eighties, when Macklesfield Park was built, the township received some kind of accommodation um, from the county for keeping the park in its natural state or having a large part of it in its natural state. And, you know, we, all night, all I'm hearing is you know, talk about keeping open space and green space and trees, and that's all I ask, is that you seriously consider keeping that portion of the park as it is, undisturbed, no lights, no permanent fields, no parking lot, um, just what it is right now, which is just a beautiful open field. And thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Any other public comment?
Yes, uh, there's one more.
Okay.
My name is, uh, Tony Manarino, I'm from four oh five Stony Hill. I, I admire
My name is Tony Manarino. I'm from four oh five Stony Hill. I, I admire your stamina. Uh, I'll be very brief. We had a, a small discussion last time about. The township maybe having their hands tied with regards to the cell phone tower construction, how there's laws that, you know, we can't circumvent. So I investigated that very quickly. I think we were talking about uh, act fifty of twenty twenty-one.
Just so you know, Dr. Manarino, I, I'm not to cut you off, but the township is going to retain outside council who has some expertise in this area. And that will probably be on the agenda for official approval next week.
Great. So I just.
I don't want to catch you off in saying what you want to say, but I, I anticipate.
No, no, I appreciate that very much. Uh, yeah, so this, this was something that I investigated. I spoke to Senator Ferry's office. He is a co-sponsor, but this particular bill, uh, act fifty has nothing to do with the cell tower we're talking about. As a matter of fact, if you read this page by page, it restricts authority uh, to cell towers no higher than fifty feet. So this tire we're talking about is a hundred and fifty-five feet. So you, you have all the rights that you always had as a township to uh, accept or reject the construction of the cell tower. And, and for, just to read it in, the, the part that really matters in the federal telecommunications act is section four oh, uh, seven oh four. Which tells you. Nothing in this act shall limit or affect the authority of a state or local government or instrumentality thereof. Over decisions regarding the placement, construction and modification of personal wireless services. You have a lot of authority as, as a township and, and there is no state law that, that restricts that. But I appreciate what you said.
Correct.
Also, one last thing, when is it permitted to provide the board with literature? I have some books that I bought to distribute to the board members. Is that permitted or?
You can do that anytime.
But I'll put it this way, typical lawyer response, it's not prohibited.
Is it? Okay, all right. So I'm going to put a stack of books there if anybody wants to take them. I appreciate your time and good night.
Thank you. Is there, is there any other public comment online?
There is no public comment online.
No, okay. We'll go to supervisor reports. Uh, I have nothing to report. Ms. Bundy?
I have nothing to report.
And Ms. Lewis?
Uh, real quickly, the historical commission is going to be on Friday, uh, with the help of Chief Kalusi. Uh, using ground penetrating radar to find additional tombstones at the Slade Hill Cemetery. So let's hope we, we win some and, and find some additional ones. That's all I have at this time.
Okay. Ms. McCartney?
I have nothing to add.
Mr. Granier?
We, we covered my boards today.
Is there any other business?
Yeah, I, and I don't know if this needs a motion or not, but um, tomorrow being June first, um, it is pride month and we do have the pride flag. Um, I would just ask that we, again, this year, like we've done the last few years. Uh, fly the flag in the month of June.
I don't think it requires a vote. There's a consensus of the board.
I think there's a consensus of the board to do such. I think we already have the flag.
Yeah, uh.
We, we do, yeah. Um, so it's, it is scheduled, scheduled to be um, uh, flown tomorrow. Um, but it, it's good that the board is reaffirming its commitment to that issue. Yep.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Uh, so if there's, there's no, there's no appointments or reappointment supports or commissions at, at this time. So if, unless there is any other business, which I hear there is none, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much. See you next week.
Good night.
Yeah, that's right.